Good evening, colleagues and the public. Before we start our meeting tonight, this is a special city council meeting on December 3rd. I'd just like to ask for a moment of silence. I know there was a water mishap in Newburyport on the river earlier today. I don't know the outcome of that. And let us think of the gentleman who is being searched for and also be cognizant of the efforts of our public safety officials from the region who have been involved in trying to find him. So we can just take a moment. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance, "To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all." If the clerk could be so kind as to call the roll.
Certainly. The roll for this special meeting, December 3rd. Counsel Preston?
Here.
Counsel Shan?
President.
Counsel Wright?
Here.
Counsel Zied? Counsel Donahue?
Here.
Counsel Granis?
Here.
Counsel Harmon?
Here.
Counsel Khan?
President.
Counsel Lane?
Here.
Counsel McCauley?
Here.
Counsel Cameron?
Here. Okay. And we would be open for public comment if there -- I think there's at least one name on the sign-up list. And if anyone remotely wants to offer public comment, please raise your hand at this time. And we'll start with in-person, and that would be Newburyport resident or businessperson, two minutes on a topic on the agenda. And that would lead us to Jane Snow.
Thank you. Jane Snow, 9 Cloughan Street. I'm calling to speak on the supplemental budget request. At the Budget and Finance Committee, there was a really good discussion about the different items and things. And plus, there was a really good discussion at budget time when these were looked at. And at that meeting, the chair shared with us that it had been revised. He had gotten information that day. So today, when I looked at this, I was very surprised, and I'm really disappointed. Because basically, and the bad part about speaking at public comment is it's before you hear the discussion, so I could be, you know, made wrong on this, which if I am, I apologize. But it looks like anything that the council did as an attempt to try to cut the budget has been put back into the budget. And I was hoping that the administration had heard loudly and clearly that for the fourth or fifth year in a row, my taxes are going to increase $400. And that does not include what will be added on for the Capital -- the Community Preservation Act. And I don't get a 3% raise being on Social Security or retirement. And, you know, this is now up to over 20% that it's increased lately. So, again, I'm sad to see this. I truly am. And I wish you the best of luck, and I hope that you try your best to correct this again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other public comment in person, and I believe no hands are raised remotely, we will move on to our order of business. And that would be Budget and Finance Committee.
Thank you. So, I wanted to start by just giving you a quick overview of how we're going to tackle this, and then we'll jump in with the first order. So, as we had talked about in our meetings and meeting most recently, we essentially have a few steps we need to undertake to arrive at a tax rate. The first thing we need to do is compute the total amount of spend, the bill, what we need to spend in order to fund the City of Newburyport for this fiscal year, which started back on July 1. We obviously have a big chunk of that already decided after debate and deliberation. That's the budget process that concluded at the end of June. But before us today, we have a supplemental which seeks to increase a little bit of that spending with those specific requests, and we're going to go through those. So, once we complete the supplemental, we'll have determined what the total bill is, so to say, the total amount of spend that needs to be funded. The second step of the process will be the tax factor, and that's where we're going to decide if all types of property are going to pay the same rate. Not the same bill, not have the same bill, but pay at the same rate. And that's called the residential tax factor, which allows cities, if they so choose, to offset and charge commercial industrial properties different tax rates than residential. So that'll be the second step. And we need that, obviously, in order to know how we're going to split that bill amongst all of the properties. What we're not going to do, and we're not going to discuss here, is we don't discuss the assessments themselves. That is formulated by the assessor through the process that is also governed by quite a few state rules, the division of local services and so forth. And there is an FY26 posting of the assessment. So if you are thinking about your property and you're watching this, you can go look up what your property will be assessed at in FY26. And we always use this time to remind folks that if you disagree with the assessment, there is an abatement process you can undertake. You can fill out paperwork explaining what your side of the story is, so to say, and that can be looked at, and your assessment could be adjusted. And there's a whole process for that, including appeals process and so forth. So that's forthcoming. Once we have the tax factor, so we have the bill, we know how we're going to split it, then we will be able to compute a tax rate. And when I say compute, it's simplistic math. It's the total bill divided by the assessments. That's your tax rate. So it's not -- we're not going to debate directly what the rate's going to be. The only wrinkle to this is that it is possible for the city to use free cash if it chooses. That's obviously a joint decision where we take monies that are called free cash. That's leftover funds from last year, either underspent budget lines or better-than-expected revenues that are left over from last year. Could be theoretically used to blunt or slow down the increase, the rate of increase of the taxes. So that's really the only other lever that we have. So that's why we're here tonight. Those are the orders we have. There are three of them: supplemental, tax factor, tax rate. And they're going to go in that order. And then we have two communications, or informational, which we will receive and file at the conclusion of this process. Okay. With that in mind, we're now going to go on to Order 768. This is the supplemental budget appropriation. And as I had talked about in committee and here, we're going to go through this line by line. And I want to explain real quick what the lines mean. So, this was an area of considerable discussion this year in the budget process. We fund departments at the category level. So we all are familiar with departments. That's fire, police, planning, mayor's office, city councils, considered department in the budget, and so forth. And within them, we have very common categories: purchase of services, personnel services, and so forth. The authoritative line is the category line, meaning monies must stay within that category, within that department. It's not the lines. So, monies may be appropriated to a certain line. DLS has indicated, and we received an opinion that corroborates it, that the lines are there for informational purposes but are not binding on the administration. So, that's how you're going to hear the motions being made tonight. We're putting money back into these categories, of course, with the additional information provided for the administration about what the general intent is of those funds. And we will go through each one of them. We will vote for each one of them, and then we will conclude the supplemental. So, the last few things on the overview is, it was revised. So I'm not going to focus on the revisions, because those are no longer on the table. I'm only going to go through what is currently being proposed. There were changes that were made, some things that were requested initially that were pulled back upon. Those are clearly shown in the public record, if you wish to see what they were. And some other adjustments as well. Some did go up, for example, in the revision to the supplemental. But we're going to focus on what we have before us today. And the total amount that's on the table for today is $296,025. About 118 of that is sort of lined up with additional state aid. That wasn't -- that data or expectation wasn't available at the time of budgeting, and the remainder would essentially come from the levy. So, that leaves a balance of about 177, assuming all the lines pass as they are. So that's the breakdown of the funds. Last thing is amendments. The council has an up or down vote on each of these lines, but reducing the amount is in order. So if you wanted to make an amendment to make a reduction, you may do so. That's a motion's in order, obviously, subject to the body's decision. Increasing the line, not in order. So it's very similar to the budget, which you are all familiar with, and that's governed by our charter. So with that said, as always, I will make the motion to start. And today, we're going to start with a motion to appropriate $5,050. The department is city council, again, using the terminology from the budget book. And the category is personnel services. And I'll take a second, and I'll just briefly explain what it is. So, this cut was made in June, in the process of the budget. I think the intent was, along with other lines, that there would be a 10% reduction in the council salaries for this fiscal year. The way it worked out, essentially, full salaries continued to be paid for six months, just using rough numbers, right from July until now. And that leaves the line short. And the other wrinkle with this is, the $5,000 here that's being requested is only sufficient to cover the shortfall, if you will. The continued payments at the stated rate, rather than having heated the cut that was made in June, would only take us to January 1. So if we want to restore this fully, it actually needs to be precisely double this amount in order to bring us through the whole fiscal year. Or, if it's not, if it's not, then what will happen is, of course, the deficit will recur. It will occur again next year, you know, almost exactly formulaically on time at the end of the fiscal year. So, that's what this request is for, and I'm happy to answer any questions anybody has, at least insofar as the committee discussed it.
Counsel Khan?
Yeah. Thank you, Council President. And thank you, Chair. I appreciate us having this opportunity now to go through. We've been able to hear a little bit about the supplemental budget, and it's kind of evolving to what we have before us. And I do feel, when I went on the website, we don't have the updated one. I think there was a spreadsheet that was provided maybe two or three weeks ago that had some items cut. For this line specifically, I think one of the conversations we had had was, what is defined in our ordinance related to salary setting? And that's an ordinance change. And then we had gone and cut some of that amount. And I think there was this debate philosophically on how salaries are set and what it takes to change them. I understand at the time the rationale for trying to reduce this line item, completely understand maybe the spirit of it. I think one of the things I've learned in my role as a counselor is that everyone here, we have a salary, we put the work in, that we -- that I know many of us do. And it's something that I don't take lightly, that while for some of us, we called it a stipend, we called it various things. But at the end of the day, each one of us here has put in our work to do what we do here in the council. So I am absolutely in favor in restoring this. I do appreciate it's only till January. In my mind, I would have wanted to do the full amount, because that's in the spirit of what we talked about too, in terms of our respect of the ordinance, and to really make a change like this, there's a better way to do it prior to just cutting a line item in the budget. But for now, this is what's on the table, and I will support that.
Counsel.
Just two informational things. One is, if anybody wants the spreadsheet, it is posted to the November 20th budget meeting posting. That's when it was provided to us. So it is there, if anybody's looking for it. And the amount, I have heard from the administration, they will support the full 10, 11. Is it 11 exactly? $10,500. $10,000, yeah. So, 50/50. So 10,100. So, they will support that. And so I leave you with that to those who are interested in pursuing that.
Thank you, Counsel Zied. Director?
Wait, just a clarification. But we can't propose that. We just have this amount.
So, you know, it's a little chicken or the egg.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Happy to stand up and propose that for the record.
Okay. I think, sure. I think you did have your hand up. Then we'll call on Counsel McCauley. Yeah. So, name and position.
Sorry, Ms. Sarah, Finance Director. So, the administration is in support of funding this line to the full extent to support that ordinance, and is happy to amend this supplemental request to $10,100 for the city council salary line. If it is not funded at the $10,100 tonight, then the request would be at the next city council meeting that you would reduce the ordinance for the upcoming council. And I provided those numbers to the city clerk for what that would be, just to ensure the line does not deficit for the rest of the year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Director?
Counsel McCauley?
Thank you, Council President. You know, we did this back during COVID days, and we cut our -- we reduced the appropriation for our salaries. We didn't actually cut our salaries. And so, and that's a -- that was a fine point of the law that was challenged at that time. And it's okay for us to reduce the appropriation, even though we don't change the ordinance in the law. So, going into next year's budget, it would be at the full salary, because that's what the ordinance says. But as of right now, we voted to reduce the appropriation for this line item by 10%. And so, it's -- I -- and we've gone through this. Again, COVID brought this on when we had some -- we thought we were going to have bigger budget challenges along the way. So, I just want to point that out, that we do have precedent on this in reducing our salary. Again, it's not a salary change, but rather, it's a reduction in the appropriation. Thank you.
Thank you. Others? Counsel Preston?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask a quick question about the ordinance change. You said you worked with the clerk. Could that be in our packet for us to change that ordinance on Monday night?
Absolutely.
All right. Perfect.
Counsel Zied?
Thank you. Now, speaking for myself anyways, as a counselor, not as chair, I very much want to double down on what the Ward 5 council stated. To me, this is much more a debate about a core power, which is appropriation. And if there is not enough money to pay for something, then there is a power of the council to not appropriate towards that. And it would be no secret that I'm concerned we may be in that position in coming years. But that's how appropriations work. And so, we didn't change the salary. That isn't the debate that we had. We had a debate around appropriation. And when the city solicitor was here some months ago, you know, we danced around this a little bit, and we -- the core question was, who decides there's not enough money? And the answer is, we decide there's not enough money. That's what an appropriation process is. So, I very much agree. We haven't changed the salary, or stipend, or whatever we call it. We have had several debates about this, and we culminated in leaving it as it was, actually. Not even talking about the budget. You may recall, recently, we had a larger debate about it. And if we can't control appropriations, what -- I mean, it becomes a question of what's really becoming left for the city council to do if appropriations aren't even within the scope of the city council, which prior to this, had never really been questioned as a question mark, as far as whether the council could or couldn't. So, my view is, and I won't be supporting this, is the appropriation wasn't changed. Pardon me, the actual stipend wasn't changed, the appropriation was reduced. And I want to say on the record, I think it was a mistake to continue paying at the rate that they did, but that's not in the control. We don't write those checks or do warrants. That should have been reduced at the time, and this will be a recurrent theme in an upcoming additional request. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Khan, and then Director Sarrow.
I'm just going to say one more point, just to respond to a little bit of something. And I just, again, there's not many salaries that we stipulate in our ordinances. I'm pretty sure it's council and mayor are the only ones.
School committee.
And school committees. So these are elected positions. And while I know we're talking about appropriation, I appreciate that, I also appreciate that one of the things, especially when you're trying to get representation, who's going to be here on the council, even though we did precedence of this, it's not fair for me to assume that while, however I might be financially, to assume everyone who's in these roles are in that same case, especially the elected who are servicing and doing something for the community. So if we are approving salaries and doing it through an ordinance for a public transparent vote of this body, to now go back and, whether it's appropriation or how we want to kind of term, make the term for it, my lesson during COVID, when we cut that and zeroed out that line item, it wasn't fair to my colleagues. And I really learned a lot in that moment, in terms of where we all put in what we do for the work we do here, late nights, everything that we do, in appreciation of our community. But this specifically, I feel like, is not like other positions, not like other appropriations. We do define this by ordinance, and as we heard just for a few of the salaries. So I'm just going to stand firm on that. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Director Sarrow, did you want to say something?
So, it is in the charter that the current sitting council can't change their own wage. So, any vote that you have would affect the incoming council. So, we were not able to legally, and we did get a legal opinion on this, we were not able to legally reduce this current council's monthly payment because you are the sitting council, and you cannot vote to change your own wage. So, as stated, the calculations that I did for the city clerk for all of you gives two different variations of how you can update the ordinance. One would be if the original $5,050 is funded, which would reduce come January, going forward for the extent of that new council's term. And the other one is to not support this line and reduce the next council's salary even further to keep the line from deficiting as a whole. So, those are all one-wheel considerations for you. So, I just wanted to make that aware.
Thank you. Counsel Lane?
I have a question in regards to that, the legality of it. So in 2020, we zeroed out the line, and we didn't take pay. So that's illegal.
With COVID, they suspended a lot of the regulations around the appropriations for certain salaries. So it was legal in 2020. It's not legal without the suspended COVID legislation. Not the lawyer.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Just a point of order, Mr. President. So, the current motion is at the 50/50. So, if somebody would like to amend to 10/1, now would be a suggested time to put that on the floor, so we can dispose of this cleanly either way.
Yes. So moved. Second.
Okay. So Counsel Khan, seconded by Counsel Shan, motion to amend to $10,100.
With the, you know, with the recommendation of the mayor, since it's appropriation, but we need to sync this.
Yeah. Okay. So that's the amendment on the floor. Any discussion on that amendment? Counsel Preston?
Yeah, thank you. I'm not going to support the amendment, because I can support the 50/50, because ultimately that is cutting our salary. That was the spirit of what we were doing. Well, at least I was the one who made the motion for this cut. That's the spirit of it, was to cut our salary. And I do feel like the people that ran for the next council were certainly aware of that. But they were not aware, and they are not able to come to the table if this were to come all the way down to zero, to have, you know, they weren't aware of the fact that it would be, essentially, they'd be making even less money than they're currently making, will be currently, will be making when they get onto council. So, I could support this at 50/50, but I can't support this at 10/1. Thank you.
Further discussion on the amendment? Okay. Hearing none, we'll do a roll call.
So, roll call on the amendment to accept the administration's increase to $10,100. Counsel Preston?
No.
Counsel Shan?
Yes.
Counsel Wright?
No.
Counsel Zied?
No.
Counsel Donahue?
Yes.
Counsel Granis?
Yes.
Counsel Harmon?
Yes.
Counsel Khan?
Yes.
Counsel Lane?
Yes.
Counsel McCauley?
No.
Counsel Cameron?
Yes.
Four, five, six, seven. Seven yes, four no. Motion passes.
Okay. So the underlying motion is still on the floor. Further discussion on that? Okay. Hearing none, roll call.
So this is a motion to approve as amended to the $10,100. Counsel Preston? Counsel Shan?
Yes.
Counsel Wright?
No.
Counsel Zied?
No.
Counsel Donahue?
Yes.
Counsel Granis?
Yes.
Counsel Harmon?
Yes.
Counsel Khan?
Yes.
Counsel Lane?
Yes.
Counsel McCauley?
No.
Counsel Cameron?
Yes.
Seven yes, four no. Motion passes.
All right. So the next one is motion to appropriate $5,000 even. The department is general administration, which falls under the mayor's office, purchase of services, and that's the category. And I forgot to mention, it's page 57 in the original budget. Again, the amount is $5,000. The stated intent for these funds under that purchase of services is for travel and training. And so we did have a discussion on this in committee. And, sorry, yeah, sorry. Seconded, thank you. And this is a line that we did talk about a little bit in committee. It has gone, you know, through different sort of variations over the years. At one point, travel and training existed within department lines budgets, if you will, and then it was consolidated here into general administration. You know, that was something that we sort of identified as maybe an opportunity for further conversation. But specific to this, this was, the administration felt that there would be a need to have travel and training with new department heads that are starting, with some of the recent new starts that we've had. And adding $5,000 to this line would bring it back to its original full request amount. There wasn't any, I would say, specific training that we identified for a specific position, but just generally that there was this ongoing need, and that they have made some improvements in process to run these requests for training through the finance department. So that's the request, $5,000, general admin, purchase of services.
Thank you. Counselors, any comments, discussion? Counselor Lane?
Is there examples of what kind of training this would pay for?
Yes. So, the specific one that brought this request to light is our new health director. Our previous health director did not hold the same level of certifications and didn't have to attend certain conferences and trainings to keep up their continuing education credits. Our new health director does. And the upcoming conference, as I previously stated in one of the meetings, what's originally going to be covered by his previous community, because they had enrolled him, but instead they filled the position and now needed to fund their own employee for it. So, his is about $1,200 for this one training alone, and there's two a year, specific to the health department. And in previous years, the health department was only using about $100 a year of this budget. They also added allocation in there, just because we have the DPS director vacancy and the hopefully-not-long HR director vacancy. And that was just to allow space for them for their continuing education as well, since our DPS director would require to maintain their licensure as well.
So, follow-up? Lane, yeah?
Is there a number of, so we haven't had, we've had gaps where we haven't had to pay somebody. How much have we not paid out to having a vacancy in a role?
On the salary vacancies?
Would you say there's more than $5,000 that we haven't paid out to somebody in that role?
So, with the DPS director specifically, we've had the interim who was receiving that salary. So, as of this time, we don't have a projected savings from the DPS director vacancy. As you can see from the supplemental request, we don't have a projected savings from the HR director as well. We may have, depending on the hiring timeframe, we may have a little savings from the chief of staff vacancy that we currently have. But we're not anticipating more than like a two-week vacancy ideally on that one. So...
And health director?
The health director was hired in July, so there wasn't a savings for this fiscal year. He started like a week or two after I did.
What was the gap, though, from when the previous health director left?
I'm not sure. But that would have been last fiscal year.
So I'd want to, before I would approve this, I would want to see some hard numbers on how much we haven't paid out to these positions, and if it was, in fact, more than the 5,100 or less than the 5,100. I'd want to work backwards into that number to backfill, because essentially, we've not spent money on these positions. That's fine and good, but there shouldn't be an additional ask if the number is greater than or equal to 5,100, in my opinion.
Okay.
Thank you. Counsel Preston? Counselor Preston?
Yeah, just a follow-up question on that. So, with the DPS director, I get that the deputy director stepped into the interim role, but we're certainly not paying him his old salary for deputy and salary for being the head.
No, but someone else was moved to interim deputy.
But somewhere, somewhere in the line, somebody is not getting paid, I guess, is the question.
Right now, with the trend of overtime, we don't have a projected savings in that department. And that might come with the seasonality of overtime, that it might dip later in the year, or we might have to start making tougher decisions on when we call people in for overtime. So, that could become a management discussion to create those savings. But as of right now, we don't have a projected saving. And it might also come down to the fact that the DPS director is split amongst four departments, as is the deputy director. So, we're not seeing as much of the savings in the general fund itself as the department is split between highway, regular parks, water and sewer.
Thank you. Further discussion? Counselor Lane?
I was wondering how long it was going to take me to say this, but this whole process is backwards. Setting the tax rate six months after the budget is asinine to me. I don't know how you fix it, but my message to the future people who sit in these seats and that seat in the corner, fix it because you're, you're working backwards. As a business, this is a horrible business. It's just, it's mind-blowing to me that we have to sit here, we set a budget, six months later, we don't have enough, and then we have to set the tax rate and impact the taxpayer to make up that delta when we're put in these seats to make sure that we minimize the taxes for and provide the best services. This is all backwards. So, I don't know how you fix it, but somebody really needs to fix this process in the future.
I will just say the tax rate setting timeline is set by Department of Revenue, and we can't do it any sooner.
So, maybe you set the budget afterward.
Maybe a month sooner, but it would, based off the timeline that DOR gives us, you wouldn't have a tax rate set any earlier than October.
That makes sense with the way the state's run, so.
Yeah.
Further discussion? Counselor Wright?
So, we're having this conversation because we have a supplemental budget. We have a supplemental budget because some is need-based, some is because we have extra revenue, some of it's because we have extra requests to put things back in the budget. So, the six weeks that I dedicated as an individual and we did as a group to come up with a budget is now being basically undone. And a lot of these spendings that we're being asked to put back into the budget, we generate about $3 million on average in free cash every year. You would think that with a budget that we have, we could find $5,000 somewhere and we could reduce our free cash by $5,000. That's really what we're talking about in this whole supplemental budget because everything that we don't spend falls to free cash, everything that we get extra falls to free cash. We should be able to fund this supplemental budget out of whatever we anticipate generating in free cash. That's why we spent six weeks coming up with a budget. And so, it's a little disheartening now that, having gone through all that in my four years on the council, all that deliberation, all that decision-making, all that consensus that we reached in doing the budget, we're now going to undo. And I have a huge problem with that. I think we should find a way, we generate $3 million a year in free cash. You can't tell me we don't have $5,000 for this, $50,000 for that. It just doesn't, it just doesn't compute for me.
Counselor Preston?
Yeah, I just want to stand and say I 1,000% agree. You know, we went through so much activity to try to make these cuts in the budget. You know, for those of you who talk about affordability and the ability to live in Newburyport, everything that you say yes to tonight is exactly going back to the taxpayers unless we let these costs go to free cash. And so, I am going to be as hard a no as I can on many of these. I'm going to say yes to a few, but I'm going to be a no on the vast majority of them because we made these cuts for a reason. I, at least, am very passionate about trying to make Newburyport as affordable to the residents as possible, and I feel like we need to stand to these cuts and use free cash to pay for these things. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Granis?
Counselor President, I was just wondering if the finance director through the chair, would you be able to discuss if we vote this down, what will happen when requests come through from like the health department for training? How would that work?
We would reject them. So, the new process that we put in place is all the requests for travel or conferences have to come through my office first to make sure that we actually have funding for it before it goes to the mayor's office to make sure that it's in line with the priorities of the administration and the city. So, they would immediately get denied in my office and then, wouldn't happen. And then, we would, depending on who it is and what it is, we would either have department heads lose their certifications or licensure, or we would lose those people to communities that will pay for them.
Counselor Khan and then Counselors Ead?
Just to follow up on that. However, another way, though, would be to come before this body with a transfer, free cash transfer, right? And that's an option.
Yes, but it is not best practice to fund your operating budget with free cash. So...
Yeah, which is, and I think that's actually a very good point, which is what, one of the situations we've run into where we have used free cash, I believe, in the past for certain line items, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes.
So, I guess what I'm trying to say, there is, this is a little different in the sense, and sorry, you can sit down, I don't have any more questions.
We just came up to a short break.
Okay, all right. You know, let's talk a little bit about, and I understand the frustration, you know, we have supplemental budget. And it did come after free cash was certified, and I think there's some debate from some of us counselors, you know, it could have come in earlier as opposed to the timing and now kind of laying upright against the tax rate setting. So, I definitely hear the sentiment of my colleagues that, you know, we went through and we talked a little bit about each of these items. Some of us didn't cut them in the beginning, some of us did support the cuts. But in this particular line item, you know, which I believe what's going to be left over is 15,000, right? Is that what, I think that's what I saw here. So, I mean, I am really open with the avenue of maybe not supporting the 5,000 here. And if there is a need to have it come before the council, I think this is kind of an educational lesson for us as well in terms of how are we, in general, looking at training of employees. And I know through our union contract negotiations, one of the things that we tried to move away from, and I believe under departments, we used to have specific line items per department. I believe that was training and known as training. And what we did is we moved putting them under one line item. And that's something I kind of want everyone to remember, that that kind of budgetary process of how we moved everything into really one, one location for all the training budget is that we can then see what is anticipated to be spent there. The unusual thing here, which I recognize, there were a lot of new hires that happened. Not a lot, I guess, one big one, and now maybe another, but we had some vacancies. So, I understand the uniqueness of the situation, and I think we all have to recognize, this is not, this is not common because we also are learning a little bit about a role and someone who's doing that role that wasn't in the planning when one first looked at how we would set that. But in this case, because it's a special circumstance, I would see an exception if it was to come before us in that type of another mechanism to fund it. So, here I will support the reducing this by 5,000. Thank you. Or not accepting, sorry, not accepting the...
Okay, yeah, so the motion on the floor is to add 5,000, correct? Okay, Counselor Zead, I think you had your hand up, and then Counselor Lane. Okay, Counselor Lane?
I'm going to be looking dollar for dollar when we come to setting the tax rate to put that back into the tax rate. So, whatever we approve here, I'm going to be motioning to take out of free cash. That is the people's money. It is over payments. There is no reason why we should be hoarding cash. This is not our money. This is the taxpayers' money. So, I want everybody to think about that when we come to the free cash allocation and what you're putting out there for a message to the taxpayer.
Okay, further discussion? All right, hearing none, well, I have a roll call vote on that, that particular line, excuse me, particular category, and so that's a $5,000 increase into the mayor's general.
Okay, Counselor Preston?
No.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
No.
Counselors Ead?
No.
Counselor Donahue?
No.
Counselor Granis?
No.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
No.
Counselor Lane?
No.
Counselor McCauley?
No.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Three yes, motion fails.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. President. Next is a motion to approve budget contingency as the department category is other charges and expenses. Original budget page is 57.
Second.
Amount is $55,000. If changed to $55,000, it would result in being $15,000 more than the original initial budget request at 40. We're all familiar with budget contingencies. This is to have essentially a placeholder in the budget to support contracts that are known to be expiring. I think counselors, and it's a matter of public record, that there is a current, one contract anyways in this fiscal year that is anticipated to be expiring and is in the process of being negotiated. And this was cut to zero during the budget cycle and with the theory being that the council would like to have some updates along the way on that. And so, this request is to bring it to 55K. If I may, to jumpstart the conversation, I would like to make a motion to reduce the appropriation. So, it's currently zero. This is proposing to make it 55. I'm suggesting we make it 35.
Second.
And if I may, on the amendment, the reason for my amendment is probably not a surprise. I still think this process needs to continue to work itself out, and I think that the city council needs to find that delicate balance between indicating that there's a good faith negotiation occurring on behalf of the city, and this is part of our rule in that, but at the same time, ensuring that there's some reasonableness to that conversation and that we're being cognizant of some of the challenges that we're facing financially. So, 35, I think, would find that balance. And in brief consultation with the finance director, I think that this would be a reasonable number for us to at least have this conversation around tonight. So, I'd ask for your support on the amendment.
Thank you. So, any discussion on the amendment to modify the $55,000 to $35,000? Hearing, hearing none, roll call on the amendment.
So, this is on the amendment to reduce it to 35,000. Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselors Ead?
Yes.
Counselor Donahue?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Eleven yes, it passes.
So, underlying motion is, it's been changed to $35,000. Any further discussion on that? All right, hearing none, roll call.
So, this is as amended to reduce it to 35. With approval, it's Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselors Ead?
Yes.
Counselor Donahue?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Yes, motion passes.
Next motion is to appropriate to human resources as the department category is personnel services. Original page number in the budget is 226, amount is 11,723. If approved, it would bring it almost right to where the original budget request was within $240. In terms of discussion on this matter, there's a bit of a recurrent theme with the, with the city council salaries. So, in the budget process, the council cut this appropriation by 10%. And originally, the supplemental came in asking for more than this. Part of it was to fund a vacation payout that was deemed mandatory. That part has been removed. So, the $11,000 that you see here is essentially the funding that's needed to cover essentially continuing to pay at the same rate as though the cut had not occurred in June to the now former employee of the city for the intervening time. So, that's what the $11,723 is, and that is the reason for that request. Again, the prior supplemental or initial supplemental asked for more. The part that it was deemed sort of a one-time expense, the vacation payout, will still be paid, but it will be paid through other sources, one-time sources.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Could I have a second on that?
Second. Okay, hearing none, Counselor Khan?
Yeah, just a quick question. I just want to make sure I'm recapping this correctly. So, we are continuing to pay, is it, to my, sorry, is it a legal obligation because contractual?
She was paid for her last day here.
From July 1st.
I'm sorry, yeah.
It was the administration's decision to continue paying at the level that they were paying the previous HR director in their discussions with council because they were negotiating a new contract. So, the previous director was paid at the same level for the duration of her employment here.
Okay.
And then this allocation fills that deficit and allows us sufficient monies to pay the new director.
And typically, if a cut is made like what we did during budget time, we wouldn't have paid to the full amount. Yeah, great, thank you.
Counselor Wright?
So, I'll stand again and say, when is a cut not a cut? Cut's not a cut when the administration ignores the council. That's when a cut's not a cut.
Counselor Zead?
Yeah, I just, it's been one of the craziest six months in my 10 years on the council. I mean, this specific position was the subject of so much debate. The person's under contract, they're not under contract, we have to do this, we have to do that. We can't get a straight answer to anything legally about anything, and the council made a cut. It made a cut to the appropriation. And, you know, at the time in committee, a few weeks ago, we had the then chief of staff before us and said, well, we continued to pay and we thought we'd confront it when we, when we ran out of money. Well, they ran out of money, or they're going to run out of money, and so the council's back here to discuss it. It's just such a corp power to me. I mean, I hear all the time about what the council can and can't do, appropriations, appointments, laws, ordinances. Those seem to be the ones that we're always pointed to. And it's like, if you have a budget and we say, no, we don't want to, or we don't think we can afford to spend that money through a democratic process, committees, votes, public process, recordings, and it's not heated, then I don't see how it's the council's responsibility to come in and now solve this problem. I mean, is there, was it a secret that we made the cut? I don't know how anybody would argue that. Was it not clear? I don't know how we would argue that. It's clear in the minutes, it's clear in the, in the process. You know, it's, to some degree, a matter, a matter of self-respect for the city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Harmon?
Thank you. Through the chair, what happens if this doesn't go through? Specifically concerned about the gentleman sitting behind you and any, you know, assumptions that are baked into this.
Yeah, so it would definitely impact the new HR director, who is sitting behind me, and the offer that was extended to him because there would no longer be sufficient appropriation for the offer that was extended. So, we would either have to delay the start, which would probably lose the candidate, or, you know, we would run out of appropriation, have to furlough the employee before the end of the fiscal year, which would also lose him.
Thank you. Counselor Preston?
Yeah, thank you. So, I'm sure it'll come as no surprise to anybody, I'm not going to support this. You know, we made this cut, the administration made a decision to continue to pay at the rate and ignore the cut that we made, and it's on the administration to figure out how to figure this out. You know, ultimately, they also chose to keep an employee on, that we did not renew the contract for that employee. So, this is on the administration to figure out. I would strongly suggest that they also ask for a free cash appropriation to make the next employee whole because it is certainly not his fault, but I can't support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Counselor Lane?
I will support it. I feel like we can't go without an HR director for much longer, or it's going to cost us a whole lot more in the long run. So, I'm going to put on my what's best for the people hat, what's best for the city hat. Like I said, I would be okay if we all got on board and funded this, but took this out of free cash. So, I don't think that the city should suffer because of what we do, what the mayor does, what's been done in the past. I'm just, I'm, as someone who's going to be on that side of the fence pretty soon, not going away, and I'm going to be pretty pissed off when I come back because manage Because manage the city better as a whole, or don't get involved, is my word. So I would say if we could have the conversation and jump ahead to taking money out of free cash, fund this, keep the operation running, and move forward, and do better next time, is my wisdom.
Okay. Counselor, thank you. Counselor Donahue, and then I think Counselor McCauley.
Thank you. Yeah, did I hear Director Saro say earlier that we cannot fund operations out of free cash? Just give a clarity on that.
No, that's practice.
Director Saro?
Yeah, so it is best practice not to fund your operating budget from free cash, because you will cause structural issues next year, where your budget this year was not sufficient to grow next year, so you'll have to make additional cuts to other departments to offset.
Okay, okay, thank you. So that being said, you know, I understand, you know, a lot of what's been discussed so far in regards to the cuts that we made to budget in an effort to rein in the budget as best we could, which is our responsibilities as council, I think, to the taxpayers. And, you know, we did, we did go through that exercise. You know, I can't say I'm pleased that this has come in in the late hour that it has, but it is here. And I do agree with Director Saro's advice that best practice be heeded, because I don't think it's the responsible thing to do, you know, just to take everything out of free cash, or, you know, offset all these things with free cash, because it's going to come back around and, I think, damage the structure of the future for this year. So I just, I, I'm not in favor of this one particularly, also for the reasons stated that, you know, we, the HR director, like, you know, I mean, we do need that position to just remain filled, and, you know, I disagree with how the administration continued to fund the position when it was in interim. But that doesn't change the fact that we do have someone now who we, you know, are about to potentially approve the appointment of, and frankly, you know, is a very good candidate that we have the opportunity to all, you know, interview in general government. So, you know, to that extent, I won't support cutting this one, or having it come out of free cash, or many others, to be fair.
Okay, thank you. Counselor McCauley, then Counselor Preston. Thank you. Counselor Donahue.
I attended the budget and finance meeting, and, you know, I saw the progression of this from a bigger number, 18,000, with moving 7,000 out. And I was under the impression that all 11,000 of this was for the previous HR director and the delta that the administration chose. So I, through the president, will ask the finance director a question. Is there a split here between what is owed, what is the delta for the previous director, and what is needed for the new potential applicant?
There's about 4,500 needed for the new applicant. The rest is for the prior.
Okay. So I'd like to make an amendment to this, to change this number from 11,723 to 4,500, or the exact number to be determined by negotiation going forward.
Second.
I'll second. Okay. Counselor Lane, seconded. Okay, so the amendment on the floor would be to revise the proposed supplemental from $11,723 for that.
The administration's comfortable with 4,500 even.
And the administration's comfortable with 4,500? That was my next question, to 4,500. Okay.
How do we know that?
Because we hire people at flat dollar amounts.
Counselor Lane?
I don't like when my time is wasted. If these numbers are inflated, and there's already a predetermined number for these line items, could we have the rest of the negotiated numbers to start here? You knew that the administration was okay with 4,500 right out of the gate. So if there's already been a conversation of if they go to this, that's okay. If they go to this, that's okay. I'd like those numbers put out. I don't want to sit here for hours and do a dance when we already know what the numbers are going to end up at.
The administration does want the 11,723. I am saying for Mr. Counselor McCauley's motion to only fund the portion needed for the new HR director, that amount is 4,500. The administration is requesting the full 11,723 to not deficit this line.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Preston?
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to make a point to the earlier point about best practice of using free cash. To be clear, we can use free cash to fund these items. It is not best practice, but it is not best practice because it impacts the ability for tax rate growth for next year. I.e., if we use free cash this year, we can't tax people even more next year. And so to be very, very clear, it's only a best practice if your goal is to tax to the maximum amount in the ensuing years. So it's not that it can't be done, it's just that it creates, it lessens your ability to tax to an even higher rate in ensuing years.
Okay, Counselor Zee, and then Counselor Harmon?
Yeah, you know, I know we kind of talk about broad themes at times and specific themes to the requests, but I do have to express my frustration. If you ask the finance director, what will happen if we don't fund this, you will always get the doomsday scenario. It doesn't get funded, the person doesn't get their certification, the world ends. The reality is, is it creates an environment where there's a more serious look at whether the funds are needed, and if they are deemed to be needed, than a more serious look at other places where those funds could come from. That's really what happens. In a city where I just went to a budget meeting two weeks ago, and we showed a slide deck where we're starting off next year's budget process at a million and a half deficit, meaning we can't, we don't even foresee ourselves being able to fund next year's budget, we have real problems. And we can't seem to cut like a few hundred thousand dollars from a $90 million budget without the end of the world happening. And so I do bristle a little bit at the best practice. Yeah, it's not best practice to fund operating from free cash. It's also not best practice to spend six weeks vetting a budget, only to undo most of your changes three months later, when really not much has changed in terms of the circumstances, other than unforced errors by the administration, who just says, who cares what the council cut, we're going to keep paying at the same rate, or we're just going to continue down, and we'll come back, and a sympathetic council being willing to give them back what they want. So if you're a taxpayer watching this, I don't even know what you might think, you know, because you're looking at a council and an administration together that basically are taxing to the max and can't seem to find a few thousand bucks in a $90 million budget for this, that, or the other thing. And we're facing the specter of losing, you know, people next year and having real outcomes that are really bad. So best practice? I mean, maybe if we were following all the best practices, I could kind of ascribe to that. But a supplemental after free cash, a supplemental months later asking for literally the same money, I'm not sure how those fit in as best practices either.
Thank you. Counselor Khan?
Yeah, thank you.
What's your order?
Oh, yes.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I, I'm not going to stay in this meeting if, you know, if that's the tenor. I'm sorry. I mean, you know, I make one agreement with, with the expert in the room who we hired to, like, know these things and to tell us what a proper best practice is, and to just be, you know, bristle that, you know, whatever he just said. I don't know, I'm sorry, I'm done, I'm done. I'm sick, and I'm like, we're going to do this for three hours, four hours, and just, you know, attack each other? I'm not up for that at all.
Okay, Counselor, Counselor. Okay, I don't, I can't judge anyone's motivation, but, you know, people obviously have strong feelings about this one way or the other. I don't, don't know that those are pointed at any of us. So I hope we can continue, and I think we should be mindful, as you say, of the tenor. So Counselor Khan?
Yeah, thank you, Counsel President. I think, I think it's fair to cut. I think we're talking about the amendment to 4,500, and I will support that. I think that's a fair kind of compromise. I know a lot of us recognize we're in a unique situation. I could, obviously, I see a lot of what and how we got here. I mean, and it is unfortunate, I'm not disagreeing with the frustration I'm sensing from my colleagues and, and even those of us who are just, you know, trying to get through this, to get to the tax rate. But I really do recognize that, you know, we did make a cut. It's not one of the line items, again, that I wanted to cut, but the majority, that's why we do six, is what passes something. I have to respect the colleagues' overall, the council's vote. And as a result, it really should have been reduced. And I think the frustration and what's happening here is it wasn't followed. And I believe that's a lot of probably going to be the resonating aspect, but I think we've all heard it now, and maybe we could get a little bit more focused on maybe some of us who, who are willing to, to maybe debate a little bit more of what we think in spite of this kind of crazy process, to really advocate that we move ahead with. So, and I'm going to say I like the compromise to 4,500, and I will support that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more discussion on the amendment to 4,500? All right, hearing none. We'll roll call on that amendment.
So this is on reducing the amount to 4,500. Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zee?
Yes.
Counselor Donahue?
Yes.
Counselor Granis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Motion, 11 motion passes. Okay, so then the underlying motion would, we would need to vote on that after the amendment. And roll call. So this is to approve as amended to 4,500. Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zee?
No.
Counselor Donahue?
Yes.
Counselor Granis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Motion, 11 motion passes.
Okay, so then the underlying motion would, we would need to vote on that after the amendment. And roll call.
So this is to approve as amended to 4,500. Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zee?
Yes.
Counselor Donahue?
Yes.
Counselor Granis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Motion, 11 motion passes.
Okay, so then the underlying motion would, we would need to vote on that after the amendment. And roll call.
So this is to approve as amended to 4,500. Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zee?
Yes.
Counselor Donahue?
Yes.
Counselor Granis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Motion, 11 motion passes.
Okay, so then the underlying motion would, we would need to vote on that after the amendment. And roll call.
So this is to approve as amended to 4,500. Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zee?
No.
Counselor Donahue?
Yes.
Counselor Granis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Donahue?
Yes.
Counselor Donahue?
Yes.
Counselor Lee?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Motion, 11 motion passes.
Okay. Ms. President, next is Office of Planning and Development, Personnel Services, page 180, $47,252. This is a restoration dollar for dollar of a line that was cut from the mayor's office. This is the special projects manager position that is proposed to be restored, but to the Office of Planning Development instead of the mayor's office. I don't have a lot of committee notes on it. I think this has been the subject of a tremendous amount of debate, and I'm sure will continue to be tonight. Thank you, sorry. But that's what the request is for. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Harmon, then Counselor Khan?
Thank you. I just want to echo some of the earlier statements and just put a little bit of broader context about these decisions that we're making in the supplemental. I telegraphed this, I think, pretty clearly in the budget and finance meeting. While I understand it's not best practice to offset the tax rate with free cash, if it's helpful to move through these things, I'm not supporting all of them, not asking for everyone to support all of them, we'll take them one at a time, of course, but I would be willing to utilize free cash for the amount that we end up with out of this supplemental package. So I just wanted to put that out there for the future and as we go through it. Thank you.
Counselor Khan?
Yeah. I'll defer to Counselor Lane.
Counselor Lane, I don't want to cold call you.
I voted this to be cut when we did the budget, and the major concern was the reclassification. I think this does satisfy what was asked for at that point in time. I do see value in this position. I would like to see, just as, just put it out there, and again, I'll talk to the people on the wall, a position for economic development. I find that would be more valuable than having a special projects manager in some way, shape, or form. I think that special projects should be handled by the people that do the projects and included in the bid in the future. But again, I did, my problem before, as I put out there, was that it was the reclassification piece. It has been reclassified, so I will support it.
Okay, Counselor Khan, and then Counselor McCauley.
Sorry, I remember where. Thank you. Exactly. No, my question's on reclassification. I believe there is no line item right now for the position. How does it work to reclassify or to create one post? Is it, is it not any different than if, as if this came in as a regular budget?
When you look at the budget, it will not look any different. So my department will create a new line in the planning department for this, and I'll, we will, we will look as if it was there from July 1st.
So the number will be the same, like if we, okay, great, thank you.
Counselor McCauley, then Counselor Zee?
Yeah, so, thank you, Counsel President. So, so while I have the floor, I'd like to just follow up quickly on that. So this line item will be created in finance and all of the expenses, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, planning, and all of the expenses from the mayor's office will be shifted here. So therefore, there'll be a reinstatement of, there'll be reinstatement of a credit, let's say, on the mayor's office versus what they're spending right now?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, we can move that.
Understood, okay. Thank you for that. Okay, to the point that I wanted to try to make here is, yes, we, we made, I'm here to remind us that we made a compromise after we cut this position. And the compromise at the time was, and I hope folks have gone back through the notes, because I have, is that at the time, we were contemplating two half positions. We were contemplating a half position for the special projects manager, and we were contemplating half a position for the environmental planner. facing a budget shortfall come July that can't pay for the operational bill that is going, that's going forward. So, I'm, we're continuing this process of playing salary chicken, if you will, because we're, we were paying a chief of staff and a special projects manager out of a line item under salaries in a broad category, but now that ran out of money. So, what happened, we got rid of the chief of staff, so now we have some legroom and some area to maneuver a little bit in case we don't vote this the right way. So, this accounting maneuvering that has gone on has now come to the end. And so, it's a long way around, thank you for your patience with me and all, but it's a long way around to say, we cut this position and the administration chose not to cut this position from their June 30th memo to us that said, I'm not cutting this position. And so, we're back where we always are and I like the reclassification, but I wish it had happened in June. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Khan?
Okay. Yeah, thank you, Counsel President. I will support this and I appreciate that it's being moved to the planning department. While it was helpful, you know, kind of going back to a lot of things we were talking about at that time, I see it a little bit different. I think we always recognized that the planning department, first of all, we had our, the conservation, environmental planner or conservation administrator was leaving and so we had that who was a half-time position. The whole debate, though, and a lot of the discussion was really the needs of the planning department. And I think we also recognized the significance and the assistance needed and just to remind folks, there was a document we were provided with on all the different projects happening, especially when we have now with the water infrastructure ad hoc committee work that my colleague here has worked so well on and very grateful for that and now that it's done. But we definitely recognize that while we have several really informed people, part of the team there on some of these projects, it is helpful to have the role of this person, the special projects manager, also being able to be a little bit, providing some thoughts there as well. And the distribution of big projects here in the city are wide and broad. At the same time, the zoning needs, which is really where that, moving that from part-time to full-time really resonated with me, because we know there's a lot of things happening from that department that we understand is going to need the FTEs there. So, I'm very comfortable with this moving here, but I will not disagree with the sentiment that, yes, this should have come earlier and it's again, one of those things that we've been saying a lot, but I think there's a lot of lessons to learn here and I'm sure even for the administration, maybe, you know, if, if the council is going to go through cuts and, and we're going to get to one of them up ahead that I want to talk, maybe I'll wait till that one, but sometimes during this process, it is helpful for the administration to come and step in while we're debating and give a little bit of insight and a little bit of listening to us saying, listen, we're going to be able to do this. Kind of like, I really appreciate our finance director here doing that, jumping in and providing that, you know, we would be okay with this. Or it really is a collaborative effort and I think during that time of our budget, maybe we didn't get that as much, that I'm hoping in the future we can, so that we don't end up in this situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, so Counsel Lane?
I just want to point out too, for the future, there's a little bit of redundancy here. This position, to support the city's projects and development, will assist in producing long-term community benefits, isn't that what Director Port does? So, there's a little bit of redundancy, if you ask me, in this position and this classification. I am going to support it, like I said, but just for future considerations, you might want to look a little bit further on that.
Counsel Wright?
So, once again, I won't repeat myself. I don't see the need for one and a half people to be added to the planning department at this juncture, especially knowing that we're starting off next year's budget, $1.3 million in the hole, and the only way to fix that is to drastically increase your revenue or to entertain cuts in other areas of the budget. So, again, this is, this is a situation that was created by the administration when they continued to pay the person that we as a council decided we were going to eliminate that position. So, if the administration had followed the council's recommendation and what we actually voted on, we wouldn't be having this conversation today because that position would no longer be part of the budget. And now, I can't support it coming back in.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, roll call on the $47,252 in the Office of Planning Personnel spending category.
Counsel Preston?
Yes.
Counsel Shan?
Yes.
Counsel Wright?
No.
Counsel Zied?
Yes.
Counsel Dunninghugh?
Yes.
Counsel Granis?
Yes.
Counsel Harmon?
Yes.
Counsel Khan?
Yes.
Counsel Lane?
Yes.
Counsel McCauley?
No.
Counsel Cameron?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next is motion to appropriate $50,000. Department is legal, category is purchase of services, page is 227. This would restore the line to what the initial request was. I don't know that one needs to talk too much about some of the challenges we've had around city solicitor or disagreements, but I think that was born somewhat out of this. The administration's request or their justification is, you know, to pay for legal services. One tangent that we did go a little bit off on in committee was the use of special counsel. So, this is the engagement of a separate firm, other than our typical city solicitor, to assist with specific matters. Land use came up in particular, waterfront west, for example, and so forth. Those are indeed all funded out of this legal line. The other area of discussion was around the city council and its legal budget, which is not in this line and is a considerably lower amount. That's the request.
Counsel Preston?
Yeah, thank you. So, again, I was the one that motioned for this cut back in June and I am not going to support this. And to be very clear, the motion that I made was looking to, the total line item was $150,000 in the mayor's legal line item and the request was made to take $50,000 out of that and put it in the city council's legal line item. And ultimately, the administration ignored that and is looking to put the $50,000 right back in the mayor's legal line item. If this had come in as the council's legal line item, I would have happily said yes to it, but I'm not going to say yes to this. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion, Counsel Khan?
Yes, thank you, through the council president for the finance director. How much do we have now remaining in this line item from this chart? I'm sorry, I put you on the spot.
We actually have over $60,000 left, but we haven't received the bills timely from our city solicitor.
Okay.
So, projection-wise, we will be deficit. And to Counsel Preston's point, sorry to use you to answer her, when city council calls our council, it does come out of that line. The city council's line is only for when you solicit your own special counsel. So, every time city council requests something from the city solicitor, that does come out of this line as well.
Great, thank you.
If I can, the administration would also like to share that we, as council president, knows because you're in them, we are meeting with new firms and will be getting new representation.
Starting effective when?
I think the end of January is when it goes into effect.
End of January, so prior to the, so this amount then is anticipated for?
Yes.
Used through the end of June?
Yes.
So, I, thank you very much. So, I will be supporting this addition of the $50,000 and I think part of it that really resonated with me, which was one of the things I alluded to that would have been helpful during our debate when we decided to cut it, was the other types of special legal counsel that we're having to kind of lean into, especially as we're talking about some really more complex projects, complex situations. And then the other thing that really, I think I would say resonates to me is, the council has a lot of efforts, especially, I just know with ADUs, how often we've been going back and forth and how it's really necessary to do our work in being able to reach out to legal counsel. So, in this one, I think it's very well justified and I will be supporting this amount. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Preston, then Counsel Harmon?
Yeah, just one thing I forgot to say is ultimately, the council's line item for legal expenses is $2,500. So, the administration has $150,000, we have $2,500. And, you know, one of the challenges we've really found here is, you know, ultimately, we did not support the city solicitor. I will say for my vote, why I didn't support the city solicitor is because I don't think we're getting fair legal representation as a council and that's why we really should have at least access to some legal representation that I think would be more fairly representing the city council. And so, that's why I was looking for money to come into the council's line item on this, but again, the administration chose to put it back into the administration's budget.
Counsel Harmon?
Thank you. Just a clarification through the chair. You said through January, this is anticipated or is through the end of the fiscal year?
It would cover the entirety of the fiscal year. The council would switch over.
Right, and at the end of January, should we approve that? Yes. Okay, and then I guess I'll just add, you know, to me, this is a little bit, like my colleague from Ward 6 said, you know, what's in the best interest of the city? I don't want us to get the legal bills and I would assume all of us would agree we should pay our bills, whether or not we agree with the services that we've had. We had, we had that business relationship with them. And then to be in a position where we cannot afford legal with a new firm, representation for the city just doesn't seem right to me. So, I just understand and respect my colleagues' frustration and have sat in this room and heard about them quite a bit, but I just, I think that the responsible thing to do is not to leave the city defenseless legally.
Counsel Lane?
I'm just going to, I guess, get a little personal here. We did pass a resolution to get opinion on CSOs in the Meramec and that's apparently fallen on deaf ears. So, just to stack onto my frustration and this experience as being a city counselor, what am I voting for? For somebody to have, you know, a call every day with a solicitor that doesn't support the city council? I had experience with the current city solic- I thought I was getting gavel for a minute. Goddamn, yes. So, there's still one more left, so don't worry, I'll give you ample time. I'd throw a tap shoe on that thing and really give it to it. But it just, personally, it's disheartening. You know, I met with Senator Tar on that, I met with a number of people that would really help the Meramec River and mostly, we were all for it and it passed and it's just fallen on deaf ears. So, I don't know what we're actually paying for, but I'm going to vote for it because, like I said, we're getting towards the end of the meeting and it's going to be a one-to-one.
Okay, Counsel Zied?
Thank you. You know, again, on the topic of best practices and I want to say on the record that in the prior debate, my disagreement's actually more with the finance director. I thought the Ward 2 counselor's question was on point, but that's me. On the legal one, I want to ask my colleagues a question. So, we have this long ordinance-driven process and partially charter-driven process to select a city solicitor, which became the subject of an absolute nightmare this year on a technicality where the city council missed by a short period of time a deadline. Okay, technical miss. But that process, in theory anyways, exists to give the city council some say in who the city solicitor's going to be. So, is it a best practice that the mayor can go and get outside counsel for any other issue at any time and pay for it from this line without asking the council if they like that representation? Not to share with us any of the questions they're asking of them, any of the opinions to negotiate with New England Development on their advice without the council being any part of that? Is that a best practice or maybe is that something we could talk about as well?
Further discussion on the motion? Counsel McCauley?
Yeah, I do, I wasn't going to bring it up, but since it is out on the table, we need to rein in, in terms of the spending in this line item. We hire a city solicitor to do this work and if we don't have a city solicitor that can handle the breadth of services we have, then I would agree that we probably would need some approval to get, to seek outside counsel going forward, right? Because it's the same process with the city solicitor. I don't, I'm not privy to the discussions and evaluation of the new solicitor, but I do, you know, we, we put belt and suspenders on our approaches here about how we utilize and get opinions from the city solicitor ourselves as a body. I'm not sure that that restraint has been shown across all staff going forward. I know opinions are needed and legal advice is needed, but I do, I'm going to oppose this because I do think that our numbers have run below the number that's in here right now. Traditionally, we're pretty close to it and if there's requests that have to come in in the May-June timeframe to continue on and look for supplemental kind of funding, I think the appropriate method would be a transfer. At that time, we did a number of transfers in the June-July timeframe to be able to clean up some of these things that went on. And again, I don't think it should be in the operational budget that goes into the, into the rolling number of what we tax people on going forward. So, I will oppose it. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Khan?
Yeah, thank you, Counsel President. I don't want to leave kind of, kind of commentated on what the Ward 1 counselor said. I think there is something to kind of glean from that and I think they're absolutely right. There's a city solicitor that we're aware of and actually, I didn't, I don't really know all the other kind of firms that we engage for, for specific matters. I don't think it's, you know, the administration, depending on what they're looking at, may find a need to do that. I know that there might be some specific reasons for it, but I do wonder from a procedural perspective, it is good to kind of talk to the council about it. So, maybe, again, I feel like we're talking a lot about like maybe future things of improving the process, but maybe even if it's an executive session and I cannot remember, you know, does that qualify for executive session or should be in the open session? But I do think there's ways that we don't have to hear about it from just casual talking, but maybe engage in the council a little bit more about, here's the person, I'm going to engage this firm and here's why, here's, you know, there might be some more transparency, I think that we could be better on. But in this regard, I'm still going to support this because I do understand the reason for it and hearing what the balance is right now that's remaining or that remaining is $60,000, I absolutely know that we're going to need, to get through June, we're going to definitely need this money. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion on the $50,000 supplemental revision for legal expenses? Seeing none, roll call?
Counsel Preston?
No.
Counsel Shan?
Yes.
Counsel Wright?
No.
Counsel Zied?
No.
Counsel Dunninghugh?
Yes.
Counsel Granis?
Yes.
Counsel Harmon?
Yes.
Counsel Khan?
Yes.
Counsel Lane?
Yes.
Counsel McCauley?
No.
Counsel Cameron?
Yes.
Seven yes, four no, motion passes.
We have two fire ones, but I'm going to do them separately. First is $22,000, Fire Department Personnel Services, page 88. The stated purpose for the $22,000 is that, to keep it short, we recently had a contract come true for the Fire Department Union. Involved in that was a restructuring, as we know, from that deliberation, also from the recent swearing-ins that we've seen here in this room. I guess there was a calculation error on the impact of that budget because there are some certain certifications that were sort of undercounted or underbudgeted for in that process and this $22,000 is set to make that amount whole. I will just note informationally, so from page 88 of the budget, Personnel Services, just to give you a sense of the category size, is $4.669 million. Thank you.
Okay, so this is on the $22,000 for?
This is the 22, correct.
22,000, yeah. Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, roll call?
Counsel Preston?
Yes.
Counsel Shan?
Yes.
Counsel Wright?
Yes.
Counsel Zied?
No.
Counsel Dunninghugh?
Yes.
Counsel Dunninghugh? Counsel Granis?
Yes.
Counsel Harmon?
Yes.
Counsel Khan?
Yes.
Counsel Lane?
Yes.
Counsel McCauley?
Yes.
Counsel Cameron?
Yes.
Ten.
Motion passes, ten.
911.
I'm sorry, 911, yes.
Appropriately.
Okay, it is. Next is fire again, personnel, same category, $100,000. This is again, page 88, Fire Personnel. This is to the original request. This is the injured-on-duty restoration, request to restore this line. I think we're all familiar with this and to some degree, but the city is currently paying so-called injured-on-duty to the former fire chief. So, we have a current fire chief and we have the former fire chief. Both are being paid. Some of what's being paid to the former fire chief is being offset by some monies we receive from injured-on-duty insurance. The finance director in the course of the supplemental provided some of that. This is all open session material and this was originally cut in the budget and is requested here to be restored and that's the $100,000.
Any discussion? Counsel Wright?
I think if I remember correctly, or at least speaking for myself, the purpose of the cut was really to bring attention to the fact that we needed to do something, we, the city, needed to do something to resolve this long-term. I think that was the purpose of the cut. I'm disappointed to say that I'll end my term and there'll be no resolution to this and I don't foresee, or I haven't been told, or there's no, doesn't seem to be any way out of this conundrum. So, we've, we as the council have expressed our, speaking for myself, my desire to resolve this. I know it's complicated, but I don't feel like we're moving fast enough to get this resolved one way or the other to the satisfaction of the city and the satisfaction of the taxpayers.
Thank you, Counsel Wright. Counsel Zied?
Yeah, I would echo my at-large counsel, but he's actually ahead of me. I wasn't even looking for us to adjudicate this or to resolve it, but just to get a cogent update on what has been happening with this, paying two people for the same position for a prolonged period of time has got to be questioned. Doesn't mean that it's necessarily the wrong thing. I understand what injured-on-duty is. I think there are some clouds around how this status became to be for this person, things that could be discussed in other venues. But, you know, when, when the supplemental came out, I did send written comment to the administration and one of my things was, I'm just looking for an update here on what offers have been made and, you know, what taxpayers need to understand is there's a significant immaterial liability here that the city has. We don't know exactly how much it is and there have been, you know, there's discussions, but nobody seems to be able to articulate what these discussions are. And for their information, again, those watching, this has been going on for better part of two-plus years and- two-plus years, and we know nothing of any, you know, any meaningful value, and that's unacceptable to me. So I'm, again, going to oppose this because that was the original reason. The facts and circumstances have not yet changed. I hope they do.
Okay. Director Sorrow, can you comment?
I would actually like to share the sentiment of all of the counselors with the frustration on this. As of yesterday, we have still not received any update from our city solicitor. So in my vast tenure of just over five months, we've only received one update on this in that time, and that was the settlement offer from the former fire chief that I alluded to that was far and above what we would pay to the fire chief for him to continue until his retirement year. Therefore, it was not fiscally advantageous for us to take that settlement, and we have not received an update since. So I absolutely agree with the sentiment of every counselor here.
Thank you. Counselor McCauley and Counselor Khan?
Yeah, so there's no secret that I'm not a fan of paying for two fire chiefs, right? And the question I have, though, through, again, through the President, to, is, is this enough? Right? So we've, we've run this line item for $185,000 for a couple of years. We have the updated injured-on-duty from yourself, and in fiscal '26 year-to-date, we have a premium of $85,000, which is what we didn't cut in, about, for that. And then we have two other officers that are here, two other firefighters that are here, listed here. But then, you know, specific to the second chief is, we've only, you know, we've paid some, we've had some reimbursement, we have a net $36,000 out, and we're, we're going to, the final number for this year is going to be closer to $114,000, $115,000. So we're $77,000 short or so already, and this just gets us to now. So how do you plan to address the other $77,000?
We've talked with the fire chief about this, and they will have to make reductions in accommodations in overtime to mitigate the impact of this, has been the discussion. And he said, as long as the professional certs are restored and that we get this budget restored, that he's confident that he can absorb that within his operating budget.
Okay, just as a follow-up to that, I just want to make sure I heard you correctly, right? So the request of whatever it is, $100,000, is, is it for the year?
That is the only request that we anticipate making, yes.
Okay, because you have 76, roughly $76,000 of other, excuse me, you've got roughly $40,000 of other people out of the 76 that are for the, for the fire chief, right?
Yes.
Okay, and, okay, got it, thank you. Aye-yee.
Counselor Khan and then Counselor Lane?
Thank you, Council President. Again, this is what I, what I'm going to suggest, and I don't know, while we're on this topic, is, you know, we have our last meeting of the year on Monday. We also have a turnover in our council, and I'm, and we will be soon having a turnover in our legal, our legal council here. I really do think, as the City Council, we should be getting an update on where we are with this, especially, I don't know if it's information transfer or knowledge transfer, but I, I don't know if it's too late to try to get an executive session of this body at our last meeting, but I really strongly encourage Council President to look and see how we can at least get updated, where are we right now, and know that when we do have a new city solicitor, I also think if there's special engagement of certain councils, this might be a matter to be looking at, because this is seriously, you know, if you look at the worksheet that was provided by the Finance Director, it's, it's really jaw-dropping. Here we are trying to cut 35, 45, 50,000 and look at where an area that's been significantly high. So I would, I don't know if others would support that, but I'm looking to Council President to maybe have some conversations and see if we could get something. I think we are owed kind of an update on this.
Yes, I agree. Counselor Lane?
So just for the people following along at home, what we just said is, your public safety is going to be jeopardized because we won't fill overtime on the Fire Department to pay for a city solicitor that has failed to negotiate a contract on a second fire chief. Pass it along to your friends and let them know what's going on for the 17 people watching. Let them know what the plan is. That is unacceptable to put the safety of our people at jeopardy because of what we haven't accomplished. Just awful.
Okay, any further discussion? This is on the $100,000 supplemental request within the Fire Personnel. Roll call?
Counselor Preston?
No.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
No.
Counselor Zied?
No.
Counselor Donahue? Counselor Granis?
Yes.
Oh, sorry, sorry. Thank you, Counsel Donahue. Counselor Granis? Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
No.
Counselor McCauley?
No.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Five yes, six no, motion fails.
Okay, Mr. President, so bear with me for one second here.
I did add it up.
So. The Building Commissioner was removed from the, so the motion now is to amend, this motion is to amend Order 768 to strike where it says 224, 725, both for general fund and total appropriation, and replace it with 168, 852. And to the Finance Director, I think we need to include the state aid, meaning the total new appropriation. Yeah, so that's my, and Counselor Khan is nodding, so 168, 852 was what was approved tonight, by, by what I get, and.
Yes, I got the same.
Yeah.
With the state aid included.
With it, yeah, because we need to appropriate all of it, source of funds notwithstanding, and that's how we do the regular budgets.
Just a quick question.
Yeah, Counselor McCauley, go ahead.
If I may, just on that, the 168 that you talked about, that includes the 118?
It includes it, correct. Yeah, because.
Thank you.
That's what I'm looking to the Finance Director to say she confirms as well, but when we do the full budget, we appropriate all the money, and it comes from a variety of sources, so I think that's the best practice here. So $10,100 for the City Council, $35,000 budget contingency, 4,500 human resources, 47, 252 Office of Planning, $50,000 legal, and $22,000 fire.
That totals 168, 852.
I got the same number.
And then we add the 118 and get a total of 287, 633, right?
Well, the 168 has the one, the 168's the new spend, so that's the number that's going to go in. It, 118 of it.
Oh, it will be subtracted out, yep.
The rest will be funded by levy. Yes. Okay, 168, 852. So motion to amend, replace the 224, 725 with the 168, 852.
Okay, motion made and seconded, and we're double-checking those calculations on the calculator.
And then the updated tax levy request is $50,000, Finance Chair, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, it doesn't appear in the order, but yeah, the net new tax request is $50,071 even.
Okay, so motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? What's the number?
The total spend is 168, 852. That's what's getting put into Order 768, and net of the unanticipated but now expected state aid is $50,071 even.
Okay, roll call. I'm also just double-checking my math.
Okay, roll call. Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zied?
Yes.
Counselor Donahue?
Yes.
Counselor Granis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Eleven yes, motion passes.
Okay, so that is it for the supplemental, Order 768. And we want to go to the?
Well, I think just, if we could, just for belt and suspenders, we can vote on the order now as amended, because that's.
Yeah, okay.
Really what it, what it is technically before us.
Because that was amended.
Even though we did vote on each line, this is kind of the end result, I think it'd be a good idea, just for the record.
Okay, so roll call on the overall order?
I'll take a second on that.
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So this is on 768 as amended. Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor, I'm sorry, Counselor Shan?
Excuse me.
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Still yes.
Counselor Zied?
Yes.
Counselor Donahue?
Yes.
Counselor Granis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Eleven yes, motion passes.
So 768 is complete. Now we'll do motion to approve Order 776 Residential Tax Factor. Motion to amend to insert 1.0 into the brackets, which is effectively a tax shift of zero. One means parity, the same rate for both residential and CIP, which stands for Commercial and Industrial Property.
Okay, there was a second on that? Okay, second.
So we did have some discussion on this in committee, and first is, I think I've explained it a few times now, so this just governs the split of the tax rate, if you wanted to charge different rates to those two classifications of property. In previous years, recent years, we have had some debate around doing a shift, meaning to put more of the burden on that CIP category, commercial and industrial. This year, the 1.0 is the administration's recommendation. In large part, what has driven the conversation, both this and in recent, previous years, is the rate of change has been the most important metric we've been following, meaning how fast residential property values are climbing in this case, and compared to how fast commercial and industrial. It's not that any property values have gone down, that hasn't been what the data has shown, but rather, there was a spike in residential, for example, in a recent year versus an increase, but a more modest increase for CIP-type properties. This year, that same spike does not exist, and so that's what I think led, and I don't want to speak for them, but I think that's what led the administration to the 1.0 recommendation. We also then just continued the conversation about what would it mean if we were to, you know, split the tax rate, when, wonder what conditions might we do that, what might it mean for future years? But in committee, no amendments were offered to change it, and so I'm just offering the 1.0 here, and if we have that, then we have that.
Okay. Discussion, Counselor Lane?
I'm going to make the motion right now to shift 268,862 from free cash into this
Point of order, we're discussing whether to split the tax rate. Right now, your motion would be in order.
Yeah, that, that would be coming up.
Okay, just let me know when.
Thank you, Counselor Wright. Okay, so discussion on the residential tax factor. So the motion on the floor is for a factor of one, which is essentially.
No shift.
No shift.
Zero shift, yeah.
Between the two, between the categories. Okay, is that an amendment or is that the actual order?
No, it's an amendment first, just so we can get the order filled in properly, and then.
Seeing no discussion, roll call on the amendment?
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zied?
Yes.
Counselor Donahue?
Yes.
Counselor Granis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Eleven yes, motion passes.
Okay, so at this time, we have a bill, a total spend, we have a factor of one. The only, so the next order in, in line is the actual tax rate, so I'll, I'll make a motion to.
Point of order, so was that an amendment to get it?
Oh, yeah, sorry, you want to vote on the underlying, yeah, sorry. Yep, that's fine.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion, roll call?
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zied?
Yes.
Counselor Donahue?
Yes.
Counselor Granis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor Zied?
Okay, I apologize, yeah, I was getting ahead of myself, thinking about how to do this best. So we have the bill and we have the factor, so now we need to set a rate. I cannot, off the top of my head, tell you what the rate now is based on where we are with now the supplemental. Maybe you can do it faster, but I know we'll get there. And we have the assessments, so the only real remaining debate is the free cash debate, and so I will open that conversation with an order, pardon me, a motion or an offer, a motion to approve Order 777.
Second.
Second. It is blank right now, so we need to amend it, but at least the motions on the floor, the orders on the floor. The mayor indicated to us in an email that he wouldn't support the utilization of free cash. I'm not sure if that's the case. With due respect to my Ward Six colleague, you know, you can, you can try and motion, but it is an appropriation, so you need some, you need appropriations to come from the mayor's office. So I, what I would offer to the President is, you know, this might be the most apropos time to at least have that conversation, even absent a motion to amend, because the underlying motion's on the floor, so at least the counselor could get a shot at making his arguments. That'd be my suggestion.
Sounds good. Counselor Lane, do you want to?
Yeah, so I will motion for that number that I previously mentioned accidentally, not accidentally, 268,862, where I'm coming from this number, I believe the number that we landed at was 168, 862?
852.
852? Okay, so 52. Where I come up with the other $100,000 is, I have a lot of heartburn over my vote on Number Nine, which was $100,000 for the Fire Department. This would certainly shift it in and could be used for that or for the two injured firefighters that we have. I don't want to impact public safety, that's really where I, I struggle with this.
You need a second?
Second.
Need a second? Thank you. So that's where, that's where I'm coming up with this number. I feel like free cash is the, we're sitting on money from the taxpayers. I understand that this is a rainy day. I believe we're, what, close to $3 million in free cash?
Three, yeah.
So that's a little bit ridiculous to me, to sit on for a rainy day. The way we've spent money for the past 12 years, to say that we might have an emergency and win a hold $3,000, $3 million of the taxpayer money is absurd, quite frankly. So give them back a quarter of a million dollars roughly, and has a good faith that[1670.87] we're doing what we're supposed to do here, and kind of right the wrongs of what we've done as a city.
May I make a friendly amendment? Just so we can align up with the information provided, could I amend that to two eighty-four six 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 eight, because that aligns with our tables?
You could amend it to three million, I'd support it, so...
We would need to vote on a friendly amendment, but, yeah, without...
You can do a voice vote.
Voice vote, okay. We got one person remote.
Otherwise, we just have to do a lot of math, that's all I'm suggesting.
So Counselor Lane is, and I think I'm looking at the same, two hundred and eighty-four thousand six six eight?
Yes.
Yep.
So yes, a roll call.
Okay, so, yeah, so we can adopt that friendly amendment, but we would need to do a roll call on that.
On the amended number, or on the amendment overall?
The amended number that Counselor Wright just mentioned.
So it would be just a roll call on the friendly amendment, whether or not to accept, to discuss it?
Okay.
At two eighty-four, six sixty-eight.
Just another comment. We've done this, I can't remember a year, we haven't done this in the past six years, to move free cash into, out of free cash and towards the tax, the tax rate. And I don't know, does anybody know how many years in a row we've done this, just as a precedent?
It's in the package.
Yeah, it's page eight in the package.
Twenty-one, twenty-two, we did it in twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five.
Okay. So for the past couple of years, we've done this, I think it's, you know, while I understand the Finance Director, that's who I have full faith in and does a great job, thank you, I just want to put that out there. I know it's not best practice, but I feel like this is a happy balance, give back to the taxpayer, and look out for the city at the same time, just to let you know where I'm coming from with this.
So alternatively, Counselor Lane, you could withdraw, and Counselor Preston could withdraw, and then you could remotion to that number.
Can I just get point of order clarification? Because the order is really the tax rate and the thousand per thousand of the CIP class amount, so how is this fitting in, I guess?
We'd have to re-figure...
It would impact the tax rate, for sure.
We'd have to re-figure the number.
She might have something in her folder that's going to...
There's going to probably be a little recess. Figure it out, I would have...
No, I'm sorry, I'm going to the floor. We're going to make a motion and accept, and I guess I'm a little confused, because are we doing that more just for agreement of this body for the next step? Is that what the discussion is?
Yes.
I think so.
It's a little unusual.
No, it's not unusual. May I speak today?
Counselor Wright, and then Counselor McCauley, sure.
So we have to be able to formally, we can't do any of this without the, without the administration agreeing. So we have to have that conversation, so we may as well have it now. So this motion's in order, so we can discuss whether the administration has any, if they would support taking any money from free cash to assign towards the tax rate.
Yeah, I understand that.
And in previous years, that's, the administration agreed to do that, we don't have that agreement, do you?
But can I tell you how we do it?
All right, Counselor, Counselor Khan?
Yes, normally what we have is, we have numbers that make sense. So normally, we'd say, motion two, and then we'd look at under zero CIP, nine dollars and twenty-three cents, and we would say, motion to set the rate at nine dollars and twenty-three cents. We don't have numbers in front of us. So I would propose a recess to be taken, to know what the numbers are, so we could actually see what the numbers relate to, instead of just taking free cash and not getting that context. So I would recommend a recess.
Okay, Counsel...
I don't think we need a recess. I think what we just need to discuss the dollar amount and equate that to a tax number. So the, so the two eighty-four, six sixty-eight equates to nine dollars and twenty-three cents.
No, no, but without, we have to take out the fifty thousand, I mean, we have to add in the fifty thousand.
Let's let the Finance Director say something, and then we'll...
The fifty thousand adds point zero zero six nine...
It's not going to be material.
...to it, so basically, if you just round any of those numbers up to a penny, it will suffice.
Okay, Counselor Khan can finish her thought, and Counselor Preston?
So, okay, thank you. So it was, it was very, very small, and I should have remembered that, because when it was the full amount, I think it was only like, I think, yes. So we're now talking, just for people listening, so we're talking about if we add two hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars, two hundred and eighty-four thousand six hundred and sixty-eight dollars, and use that free cash to offset the tax, so we're going from, if we didn't add anything, correct me if I'm wrong, it's nine dollars and twenty-eight cents per one hundred thousand dollars of property.
So add a penny to all of them, just to be technical, so nine twenty-nine to nine twenty-four.
Okay, so we're going from nine dollars and twenty-nine cents, and the proposal is nine dollars and twenty-four cents. So we're talking about a difference of four cents, wait, did I do that right? Five cents, five cents, sorry, thank you. So to me, it really, as you noticed, and I went, and I went, I would say last year, when we went through this, I did support using free cash as just as a, almost like a compromise, I don't want to say posterizing, but just feeling like we're doing something to, as a goodwill, I guess, to folks. And at the end of the day, when we look at exactly what we know, certain things have costs, we went through line items of our budget, but I'm talking about other things that will probably be anticipated, whether it's legal, or other things that the city would like to probably put money towards. We always talk about roofs or unexpected things we have, I know we talked a lot about how much we have in free cash, and we have what we're calling excess, or money that goes back to taxpayers. That's not how I see this. I see this as, we have money, and we take money and put it in places where we are able to tap into, knowing that we have emergencies, or situations where we don't need to, you know, offset with other things that might hurt the city more. And we talked a little bit about the fire, fire injured on duty, for example, you know, being able to go into a healthy balance of free cash to do those kinds of things is not a bad thing for the city. You know, we don't know what's going to be happening, and that's kind of like good preparedness. So for me, two hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars, two hundred and eighty-four thousand six hundred and sixty-eight dollars is not, it's not unsubstantial to go towards a line item like that, for all for just going from nine dollars and twenty-nine cents to nine dollars and twenty-four cents. So I just want us to be thoughtful, and I remember when I did this last time, and I agreed to spend, at that time, it was around three hundred thousand dollars. Are you okay? Yes. I remember getting emails from residents saying, wow, thanks a lot for saving me like three cents, or whatever, you know, I got, I did hear from residents during that action. So I just, I would just have us be really thoughtful, especially knowing all the things that are probably lined up to possibly happen in the city that we're going to have to fund.
Okay. Counselor Preston, and then Counselor Zied?
Yeah, thanks, so, gosh, a couple of things. One, we have a reserve account for emergency activities, so emergencies really shouldn't be even coming out of free cash, they should be coming out of the reserve account, but, you know, we also have three million dollars in free cash for things that come up that we want to buy or do, that wouldn't tap into the emergency funds. And ultimately, the idea of, thanks for saving me three cents or five cents in this example, you know, that's, that's not a real argument, because it's, it's five cents per thousand dollars of assessed value of your home over your entire tax bill, so it adds up to a whole lot more than five cents at the end of the day. But I really raised my hand in the first place, because I had a couple of questions. One, where does the two eighty-four, six sixty-eight come from? Through the chair.
It's just in the heat map on, in the communication six eighty-one. It just aligns with one of the columns, it happens to be half a percent.
Okay.
So that's why that number has risen to the top of the heat.
All right, that was a bit of a mystery to me, a little bit there. And then, secondarily, in the event of the administration not agreeing to free cash, yet we were to set a tax rate that would equate to the utilization of this amount of money, what happens? Other than forcing the administration to use the free cash that we're looking for them to utilize, but, you know, the mayor's not here for that negotiation. So could, I guess, at the end of the day, my question is, could we set the tax rate at, what was the number?
Nine twenty-five.
Nine twenty-five, thank you. And force the administration to utilize the free cash?
Before we, could we ask the Director, I mean, would free cash, using free cash in that amount, would that be something that the administration would support, if that's the way the council wants to go?
I'm waiting for a response from...
Okay, fair enough.
Can you repeat that? I kind of lost for a second, how much you're saying? So what I'm saying is, if, if the administration does not agree to the utilization of two hundred and eighty-four thousand six sixty-eight in free cash, if we were to still just set the tax rate at nine twenty-five per thousand dollars of assessed value, is, couldn't we do that and ultimately force the administration's hand to use the two sixty-eight, six six, or two eighty-four, six sixty-eight?
All right, Counselor Zied?
Yeah, I'll do my best to answer that question, I mean, it's a hyper-technical question, because, first thing, this is my opinion only, I'm also not a lawyer, but have been doing this for a long time. You can't necessarily force the use of free cash, but it sort of goes back to the appropriation discussion. If the money doesn't exist, it doesn't exist, so you've got the, you know, it's sort of a similar analog to when we talk about a potential cut to the schools, you know, you have this top-line number, and you say, okay, you've got a hundred thousand dollars less to figure out how to make that work, so that the options would be presumably a free cash transfer, or you'd have to work out the line, so you come in at that, whatever that levy difference, total levy collection difference is, which is the five cents per thousand, taken up to each property, taken up to all the properties, in terms of the total amount taken, and you can imagine that, you know, a penny on every assessed dollar does add up to something, two hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars, to be precise, so that would be my broad answer to that question. But I would say, in my, all my years, it's usually been a negotiation and a discussion, and then we've come to some conclusion that is some kind of consensus. I don't think the administration could stop the council from amending an order the way it sees fit, and passing it as it sees fit, but our illustrious city solicitor may disagree, so, don't know. I did want to speak on this matter, though, and I did have my hand, I think I was in the queue, so I admit, Mr. President, I'm just at wits' end, I think, myself, I've been doing it for a long time, as I just said, and this has been my washing machine cycle. In the fall, I say, have you thought about trying to build a budget around two and a quarter, or two percent, to show some restraint, to show some reduction, to set us on a course that would lead to a different end? Then what happens is, it never happens, the budget's always built on two and a half, and then the budget comes out, then painstakingly, the work on cuts, most of the cuts fail, the majority of the time, the majority of the years I've been on, the cuts fail, because of the typical arguments, you know, everything will be jeopardized, people won't get training, it's the end of the world, and the argument pendulum shifts towards, you know, okay, are we providing the right services to the residents? And as the Ward Six Counselor points out, the tax discussion is put off until the fall, so it's fine, so we have that conversation. Most cuts fail, the thing passes. Then in the fall, historically, a supplemental will come, it then restores most of the paltry cuts that were made, because we have to, you know, or we won't be able to put out fires, or, you know, there'll be all these bad things that will happen. And then we come to the tax rating setting time, and it's literally the last line of defense, to use free cash to try and soften the tax increase on the residents, and, yeah, it's not as much dollars as I would like, but my epiphany in my years is that it's actually just another way to try and impute some fiscal responsibility, to say, maybe you could just start with two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars less next year? And, you know, that might sound like a lot, but again, we're talking in the context of like a ninety million dollar budget, so what we're asking for in terms of restraint is so minimal, and it's so disappointing that it rarely can win support to say, let's do this, and that's the end of my washing machine cycle. The machine beeps, and then I start all over again in the fall, I just did two weeks ago with the same thing, I've tried, to no avail. So I would urge my colleagues to not think about this necessarily just as a simplistic, like, hey, you know, it equates to fifty bucks a year for the average resident, but trying to set a long-term fiscal course, that's one thing I think I've learned from the new Finance Director, is cities and towns can set, you know, long-term goals, and trying to meet those, but it takes a little bit of discipline along the way, and I'm fearful that, you know, we don't seem to want to do it voluntarily, but I think that the numbers are going to force us to make those, and people have said, you use the O-word, the override word, why'd you say that? And I said, well, because last year, we had to lose seven-plus positions, and, yeah, they weren't filled, so nobody, no literal human received a pink slip, but those positions were wiped off the face of the earth, because we couldn't balance the budget otherwise. That's not a canary in the coal mine, that is the actual emergency happening, and I think it's worse next year. So two hundred and eighty-five thousand would just start us, again, a very meager reduction to try and impute some fiscal responsibility to next year, and if you think about it from that context, maybe you'll find a way to support it, rather than think about five or ten cents.
We have many hands up, I'll call on Counselor Shan, who hasn't spoken on this, then Counselor Donahue, and then Counselor Wright.
No, I was just going to speak to the comments that my at-large Counselor across from me made regarding just the changes from last year, where we did get the messages on the, thanks for saving me a few cents. And if I'm just looking at the difference between the single-family home, it is, it's fifty-five dollars a year, and I appreciate that there are folks in this community that are concerned with the amount they're paying in taxes, but I am concerned with what we are going into in this coming year, possibly with more insurance issues that we don't have line of sight to paying for. So I would tend to agree with my Counselor at-large across from me, that I don't think this is the right year to be shifting that, making that CIP shift, so...
Counselor Donahue, and then Counselor Wright, and I think we'll then hear from the Finance Director. Counselor Donahue?
Yes, thank you. I'm not here to support offsetting the tax rate with the free cash, for the main reason that ultimately, I know state is a rainy day, finance, et cetera, but we have some pretty serious big-ticket emergency potentials coming our way, such as health insurance that was just mentioned, as well as, you know, the insane amount of water infrastructure projects that we just finished, several weeks of marathon meetings to determine we can't afford and have no funding for, yet are all dire needs. I mean, our water supply is at risk, like genuine risk of not existing. So, you know, I mean, while I appreciate the effort, especially a good-faith effort to the residents that we are trying to lower the taxes, this, it's not, it's not the way to do it, and, you know, we need to be, they need to do better job next year, I can't say I'll be here, but, you know, it's just, to me, it's not the right way to, I'm just not going to be supporting that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Counselor Wright, and then we'll hear from the Finance Director, and Counselor Harmon had his hand up.
So one of the unintended benefits of taking some of the free cash and applying it to the tax rate is it lowers our total levy, and provides us with some levy capacity in doing so. So if we lowered our levy by that amount, we can leverage that, because that can then support bond payments. So if we had something that came up in the two to three to five million dollar amount, we'd have capacity in the levy to use that to support the debt service on a bond, if we were to have an emergency. My colleague from Ward One mentioned a long-term plan, and if we're going to have a long-term plan, we need some philosophical decisions that need to be decided, some policy issues. Are we going to be a community that's, that's always going to tax a hundred percent of the levy? That's something we need to talk about. Are we going to live within the constraints of Proposition Two and a Half, plus new growth? That's, we haven't. The budgets have been significantly larger than that. So I agree with my colleague from Ward Six, the thought process is reversed. The time where we had to impact this conversation was during the creation of the budget. And so philosophically, that's where the conversation has to start, and unfortunately, we don't create the budget. So if we keep getting budgets from the administration that have a four percent increase, when our revenue doesn't match that, you can't not but help to get a structural deficit. And the only way to overcome a structural deficit is to raise your revenues, which is great, but new growth can only get you so far. Or to cut your expenses. So I'm going to support, as I have previously in all, in my other budgets, the strategic use of some free, of some free cash, so we can create a little bit of a gap in the levy limit, and also provide the taxpayers with the relief that they're entitled to. I don't think stoping free cash is a good, is a good solution long-term. I think that the leverage is more on creating sustainable budgets moving forward.
All right, how about Counselor Harmon, who did have it up, and then we'll go to Director Sarrow, and then we'll go to Counselor Khan.
Thank you. So appreciate all of the conversation about this, I think my problem is the number. As I said earlier, I would be willing to support utilization of some free cash to offset the supplemental budget changes that we just made. If you, just to confirm my understanding, Director Sarrow, this is a situation where if you sum up everything that we've approved in June, plus everything that we approved tonight, and then you take that total and subtract whatever amount we moved from free cash, that then reduces the tax burden that we then apply on taxpayers, right? So this money that we're moving from free cash to support the budget is not going into the budget, it's just paying for a little tiny bit bit, so it wouldn't allow us to do anything, for example, on fire, or other areas where we may have gaps, or, you know, concerns. So this is, frankly, it is a better tool for addressing gaps sitting in free cash than it is offsetting the tax rate. We also talked earlier about a one-to-one for the dollars that we approved, and my math is different, because we approved one hundred and sixty-eight thousand, we got one hundred and eighteen thousand of state aid, which left a total of fifty thousand and seventy-one dollars that were actually from the supplemental that we approved and drafted back. So 284 feels like the wrong use of these funds when we know we're going into a tough year, but I would, I would be open to the next step down, as my colleague-at-large pointed out, we should use the ones near us, which is out of 113, 626. And good faith for my colleagues who I think are making compelling arguments about future fiscal health, as well as my colleague from Ward Six, who I indicated I would support this for, but, so I just wanted to put that out there. I think the motion is actually on some number change, but we'll go to Director Sorrow.
I think that was withdrawn, and, yeah, okay. Director Sorrow?
Hi. So I did get a chance to speak with the mayor, and he said, in the air of compromise, since the counselors did compromise on the supplemental budget and approve the large portion of it, he would agree to the one-to-one, Robin, to the table, for use of free cash for reducing the tax rate.
But wait, so which number?
113626. Okay, just to help you.
Thank you.
Okay, 113626, okay. Counsel Khan, you had your hand up. Do you want to, I'll get him to queue.
If I could have the Finance Director, can you please share, like, at the committee, some really important things were kind of shared from the Finance Director on, you know, when you go to the levy limit, and then the use of free cash to offset, and then what happens next year in terms of, for taxpayers, the impact and why the gradual, but if you could share a little bit of what the context of good practice, not, I shouldn't say good practice, but of the practice of the levy, and then what the implications are next year, which I think was some of the things that were mentioned.
Yeah, so you would have, by reducing with free cash right now, you would get the immediate short-term relief to the taxpayers this year. And then next year, even if you just do a standard, like Prop Two and a Half, they're technically making up the deficit of the free cash next year, so they're getting hit next year for the free cash, unless you're continuing every year to use the exact same amount of free cash to alleviate that same impact year after year. So it does eventually hit the taxpayer, it just depends on what year you're hitting them in, that it's going to happen.
Counsel Wright?
Also through the chair, the alternative would be for the budget to be reduced by the same amount.
Absolutely. That mathematically would also work.
Counsel Lane, and then Counsel McCauley.
Daily News, right? Okay, you can quote me. Okay. New Report does not care about affordable housing. It is the, not the amount, it's the sentiment to the people. Maybe $50 isn't a lot to a lot of people in this room, but it is to a lot of people in New Report, I assure you. And just because they don't show up and walk through the door and say so, and how much they appreciate it, rather, it's the people that, and this echoes from last year, when one of the counselors said, "It's New Report, they'll pay for it." It's not the New Report I grew up in. It's not. I get it, it's changed, it's gentrified, train coming in, and I just kind of did that, and we just set on a path, and here we are with our assessments, and no fault of the city, the state's changed the assessments, they've changed the way it's gone. So now you've got, when I started in real estate 13 years ago, assessments are always lower than market value. But now it's pretty close. So we're just getting gouged nonstop, and a lot of people cannot afford to live here anymore. People that were here and built this city so that we all could be here are now being forced out. So it's not the five cents, it's the sentiment. Do we want to say to the people, we're trying, we're trying to make it more affordable, we're trying to let families who are younger come into this community and stay here and grow families so that the future looks like New Report did 50 years ago? And I get it, you want progress, you want to move forward, I get it, onward forward, hello, let's go. Don't step on the people that are trying to stay here, who love it just as much as you do, and can't afford that. Or stop talking about affordable housing.
Can you just keep your remarks confined? Okay, you're saying you are, if you do this, you are, you know, so just state your case.
Gavel me next time, please, I want that. Yeah, see, go ahead. And I appreciate it. Just saying, and please don't take it personally, it's not, and I'm not directing it to people at this table, okay? I'm one of them. I get it, I'm part of the problem. But let's just say to the people for once, we get it, like, we're working on affordability. And it's not just New Report that has this problem, it's everywhere. COVID was the one thing that I had said, they were one worldly event away from being in a really bad economic situation, well, everybody is. And a lot of it has to do with the spending that went on, and nobody kind of hit the brakes and said, hey, let's assess, let's see what the ripple effect of this is. But here we are, and it's just disheartening to me because I think of these people that are in the community that have come to me over time, and they're just going to have to move, and I might be one of them. So, good luck to you all, and that's all I have to say, and.
Okay, so, is, what is, if the clerk can remind us, is, what is the motion on the floor?
Right now is to amend it to 284668. If you would like to change that, then you would have to.
All right. Was that, who's?
That's the last one from the Ward Six Counselor.
So if I, if I, if I may, would the motion are considered withdrawing? And I can make another motion.
Sure.
Second. Motion to amend, and to fill in both blanks with $9.26, so both blanks, so that the order reads that. The City of Newbury Port adopts a tax rate of $9.26,000 per thousand for the residential and open space in parentheses R and O classes, and $9.26 per thousand for the commercial, industrial, and personal property in parentheses CIP classes for fiscal year 2026. Second.
Second.
Do you, would, so that takes us to the 113 number. My only question is, does administration want an embedded transfer order for the 113 to something to memorialize that, or, so I think there needs to be an accompanying, you know, and that 113, I'm making this part up as I go, but, and that 113,000, 626 is hereby appropriated in support of this tax rate. I think that's sufficient to get the point across.
Point of order?
Okay, yes.
According to the table, it would be 9.5, not 9.6.
So the extra penny is to offset for the supplemental. These tables are based on, these tables are based on, as it was passed with no supplemental, we've got .0069, so it's a penny. That's why it's a penny more than what you see here.
Okay, so that's the motion, and we'll second it, so 926 and 113,626 hereby appropriated out of free cash, the administrations indicated.
That leaves it at 925, I thought.
Agreement with that, and that was seconded.
With the supplemental, yeah.
Who was the second on that? Counsel Harmon? Okay. All right, so discussion on that motion?
That's the amendment only at the moment.
That's the amendment, okay. Any discussion? Counsel Khan?
Thank you, Counsel President. Yeah, I'll support that, and, but I do want to make a very, a lot of things that were just stated by a fellow counselor, it doesn't sit well. We're, I think part of it is, we need to elevate the conversation, we need to be able to talk, I think respectfully, and to say, and accuse of stepping on residents, it doesn't sit well with me. I do hope for an apology. I do want to say that when we talk on this table, we have debates because we're kind of getting a little bit into helping residents down the road, knowing that what the implications are of these actions, being mindful and thoughtful on the people that do need help. We counselors are available and we help them. I think many people know, and I don't need to tout it for myself, but I really encourage and caution us in how we talk to each other. You know, this job we do is not easy, and I'm sorry, I'm going to speak. I really do feel like the prior counselor and some other things, we've gone, we really do need to gavel, we need to take breaks, recess, we could tell emotions are getting high, but as someone who really does do a lot of work, a lot of research, a lot of kind of trying to listen to what I'm hearing from some of the people on the fiscal health of the city moving ahead, hearing about where the budget is really where we're already locked into a process because of the budget we already passed. So there's so much more here layered, but I personally don't want it to seem like I am being bullied or strong-held to support this. I am going to support it, just in good faith, but I don't appreciate these tactics. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Lane.
Well, I apologize. And my intent was not to take a personal shot at anybody, and that was not you especially. I know you do a lot of good work, everybody here does a lot of good work. It's more my, it's more, yeah, and it's more my frustration, and I apologize to all of you as well, if anybody took that personally.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any more discussion on the motion amended, amendment? Counsel McCauley?
Yeah, so I will support this as part of, part of an ongoing process that we've had. We've always, in my tenure here, outside of COVID, we've always been able to invest something back from our free cash back into the community. It's been higher than other, other times. This year is a little lower than we've done traditionally over the last four or five years. In a way, we do have to be more disciplined as the discussion has gone on, is that our goal here in the budgeting process not only is to pay for the operational, the daily operational aspects of, of what goes on in the city, but also to invest in the future here, right? And some of the things that we're not able to do is, is we have constraints with our excess levy capacity along the way, and that's a problem. It's a problem because when we have things, when we have projects that are coming up, you know, we've talked about all the things we may have, but we already know, for example, we have two roofs that are going to have to be done, and we don't have the excess capacity, but we will potentially now, based upon the cuts that we've made, et cetera, along the way. So it should be an easier process come June when those, when those potential bonds come out. My, my message here is, one, I hope that I'm supporting this, but the secondarily is, we've got to learn in, as we talk about long-term planning, we've got to learn to use debt well. We've got to use good debt to be able to get more bang for the buck. Example of that would be the way CPA organization runs, they, they spend money on some little things, and they also are able to have a run rate of accumulating of good debt and paying for good debt going forward. And I think that's part of the lesson here that we're, we're talking about, because we're doing it, like, the frustration here is, we're doing this work after, and we could, we probably should be doing this work in June when we come into the budget, right? If you set a parameter of a 2% increase instead of a 2.5%, and you live within those parameters along the way, you've built yourself some, some flexibility, some financial flexibility in your own balance sheet along the way, and you shouldn't have to catch up with the residents eventually, right, because they're getting something from it. That's all. Thank you, I yield.
Thank you. Counsel Donahue?
Thank you. I'm not going to be supporting this still. I stand by my statements earlier, and, you know, I, while I appreciate the general apology, I still don't appreciate the tone. I live on a fixed income with a disability in the city, and I got to tell you, I'm not benefiting from.
So this is okay for some, but not for others?
50 bucks a tax, on taxes, you know. It's, I don't agree, I just agree strongly that 50 bucks is going to break anybody in the city, myself included, and I'm at the bottom, okay? So I just want to make that clear. That's my point.
All right, Counsel.
I do represent the bottom percent of people that can't afford to be here. So, you know, that being said, I don't support the amendment, I don't support the use of free cash, I'll support the taxes. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this amendment? All right, roll call.
So this is on the amendment to the 2.926 per 100,000, I'm sorry, per 1,000. Can you say it again, Counsel Zead for us?
Yeah, it's basically to insert 9.26 into both blank spaces in the order.
And to the 113?
And to add the 113, 626 appropriation.
From free cash.
From free cash.
Okay. Counsel Preston?
Yes.
Counsel Shan?
No.
Counsel Wright?
Yes.
Counsel Zead?
Yes.
Counsel Donahue?
No.
Counsel Grantis?
No.
Counsel Harmon?
Yes.
Counsel Lane?
Yes.
Counsel McCauley?
Yes.
Counsel Cameron?
Yes.
Eight yes, three no, the amendment passes.
Okay, so, need a vote on the underlying order? Because that was the amendment? Is there a motion to approve?
To approve as amended?
It's on the floor.
Already on the floor, yeah.
It's on the floor.
Okay, any discussion, roll call?
Counsel Preston?
Yes.
Counsel Shan?
Yes.
Counsel Wright?
Yes.
Counsel Zead?
No.
Counsel Donahue?
I'm sorry, what, just, it's on the?
The final.
Underlying motion?
It's on the final motion to approve Order 777 as amended.
And the order as amended is to?
With the tax rate of 9.26 and with the appropriated amount of 113, 626 from free cash.
From free cash, okay, so that, okay, so, all right, thank you for that. Okay, I just, it happened really quick.
Counsel Grantis?
No.
Counsel Harmon?
Yes.
Counsel Khan?
Yes.
Counsel Lane?
Yes.
Counsel McCauley?
Yes.
Counsel Cameron?
Yes.
Eight, three?
Eight, three, motion passes.
Okay.
So the final matters for budget and finance are to motion to receive and file collectively Communication 681, Classification Tax Rate Proposal, and 682, Tax Rate Information.
Second.
Okay, so this is to collectively receive and file both 681 and 682? Any discussion? Not hearing none, roll call.
Counsel Preston?
Yes.
Counsel Shan?
Yes.
Counsel Wright?
Yes.
Counsel Zead?
Yes.
Counsel Donahue?
Yes.
Counsel Grantis?
Yes.
Counsel Harmon?
Yes.
Counsel Khan?
Yes.
Counsel Lane?
Yes.
Counsel McCauley?
Yes.
Counsel Cameron?
Yes.
Seven yes, passes.
Okay, do, do we want to take a momentary recess? We do have the HR Director appointment, I see two, we'll take a.
Sure.
Five-minute recess. All right, we'll be back in five minutes.
I did share the draft minutes with my colleagues earlier today or last night. The committee did meet, we had a forum, we also had other members present as a committee of the whole. We did ultimately vote three to zero to approve this and recommended approval by the full council. And I'll just briefly sum up what we discussed. You've all seen Mr. Crowley's resume, extensive experience, both in the military and the Air Force, including ten years involved in HR-related activities, along with several positions in the private sector and HR, parenthetically, but more unrelatedly, he is also the General ECU Counselor, or he will probably, for now, be the father. And I think we had a quick discussion, the mayor was, the mayor was present.
Okay, the mayor was, yeah, people should unmute, and I'm guilty of that. So we're discussing Appointment 567 for Stephen Crowley to be appointed as the Human Resources Director. We met Monday night, General Government approved a positive recommendation, three to zero in committee. The mayor was present at that meeting, he's also ex officio for General Government. He said there had been a robust search, thought Mr. Crowley had a great varied experience in human resources and would be a good fit for this position. Mr. Crowley introduced himself, which we won't make him do again tonight, but he is available here for questions, and we do appreciate you coming in person to this meeting. And, you know, counselors asked questions about experience with unions and collective bargaining, asked about being included in conversations that, that impact human resources and impact employees, that it would be happening in the workplace and how to be involved in those. We talked about retention issues, and Mr. Crowley spoke about reviewing why people have left. about retention issues, and Mr. Crowley spoke about reviewing why people have left the employment of City of Newburyport, looking at exit interview data, and if he has chosen to be the HR Director, continuing that practice, sort of looking for reasons why people might be leaving. Is it a leadership question or other reasons that people are leaving, and how can we institute policies and practices that are going to keep people here? We discussed union contracts, how they're negotiated, the role of the council on those, how to deal with sensitive personnel issues, and his take on discretion, and how situations like that would be handled. Talked about employee improvement, performance issues, progressive discipline, hiring, and where an HR Director would tap into legal advice. And Mr. Crowley talked about, generally about a case that he was involved in, which involved legal to have a successful resolution. Talked about hiring, software tools, again, more on performance evaluation. I did ask questions that had been submitted in writing by Counselor Zed around the role of HRs that relates to the mayor and disagreements with the mayor, and relations with the city council, and sort of what the council's role would be in providing direction to HR, and, you know, level of information that counselors are entitled to, what would be a normal cadence of meetings with counselors. And again, these are all posted on this meeting tonight, so these are my minutes from that meeting are all here. I'm just kind of laying out what we talked about. I talked about severances as a way to resolve employment disputes, and volunteers, and what their role is in terms of legal status, and compared to other employees of the city, working with folks with different abilities or disabilities, something that Mr. Crowley would want to improve on. And, you know, it was a very good, I think, collaborative discussion, a lot of good back and forth, and I think we can't speak for every committee member or the other members that were there, but I do think we were impressed, as evidenced by our three to zero vote. So I don't know if counselors would, so I would ask for a motion to approve the appointment. If I can get a second on that. Okay, thank you. Should have done that in the beginning. So if people want to ask questions, that would be great. Zed, you have your hand up, and we can take it from there.
Through the President, if I could address the candidate. I needed 60 seconds for a little context, and then I have, so maybe tonight was evidence of it, but we are struggling, I think, and so I want you to understand my perspective. I speak obviously only for myself, and it's been a tough, in my estimation, couple of years from an HR perspective. You know, maybe you've seen some headlines, you know, to the extent that one can, about, you know, you heard tonight a debate around an employee injured on duty and paying two salaries. We've had several department heads leave, some under less-than-desirable circumstances, and not very well-understood circumstances in some cases. We obviously had a very tough go with the recent HR Director. That's obviously, again, all in the public domain. So I'm a little jaded, to be honest, but I'm trying my best to come in tonight and not apply that jadedness to you, because I don't think that's fair to you. With that said, I did listen to the recording, and I appreciate the Chair taking the time to ask my questions. I do have some concerns, but I thought it'd be fair and reasonable to ask you. You know, I wasn't able to attend in person. So I have three areas of concern. I'll present the first one, so that's my context. On the topic of union negotiations, which came up in the committee meeting, sort of when asked about the role of the city council in the union negotiations, the way I took the answer was, you sort of, you get it when it's completed. And, you know, the term "stay in your lane" was used in the committee meeting, meaning, you know, we need to negotiate this thing. And I'm very respectful of that process, but a pure "stay in your lane" will present it to you when it's complete, is what we've been doing for the past many years. And in my opinion, it has been a stunning failure. You know, there have been a lot of contracts that have come to us, negotiated, but, you know, this past year, several passed barely, six to five, which to me is not a symbol of a good process. Recently, the Finance Director, for example, tried to include us a little bit by giving us in conversation, during conversations. And I want to draw a fine line that I'm not trying to say, let's have 11 people join you at the table. I'm also trying to say that coming to us at the very end has not been a very successful, because you alluded to the contingency, but that's a point figure. Again, we debated that tonight. It doesn't necessarily capture the council's broad-based position. So that is my first area of concern. I'm reticent about that. I wish the answer was more, I'll keep you updated as we go through the process, try and make sure the contingency reflects sort of broadly what the council can adopt, and we can avoid some of those issues. And I tried to come tonight with a concrete example of each, but a recent example would be a fired union contract that we negotiated. Again, we saw a little bit of that tonight, but it essentially redid the entire structure of the department. But nobody here knew that. Not a single one of us, to my knowledge, knew that until it came to the council. We spent a year negotiating this. Basically, don't mess up our work. Well, what kind of position is that to put in? And as a colleague in another city, I'm hoping you can speak to that. So that's my first concern. And if you could, again, through the Chair, address my concern.
Sure, I would be glad to. So, yes, I can see keeping you appraised along the way as far as some of the things that we are discussing and stuff within there, but there's the specifics and stuff, you know, we couldn't at that point, because we're in the middle of that negotiation side. So, but as far as briefing along the way, as far as what's happening and where we're sitting, if we're close within the area that we're talking about, or if there's not any major, or if there are some major issues that are coming up through it. There's particulars I can talk about, but during the actual negotiation side, there's certain things I can't talk about. So what I'm able to talk about, I would be more than welcome to come in and at least talk and have that collaboration going back and forth.
Thank you. It kind of leads well into my second area of concern, which is a broad-based topic, I admit, but access to information has been very challenging. So I don't know the structure of Beverly, admittedly, but I assume you have some appointment authority, powers, just as we do here. You know, mayor suggests somebody, say, as a nominee for a department head position, and the council approves. And I'm just using that as my example of this. We are routinely, obviously, asked to vote on department head appointments, but we are given no information from an HR perspective. For example, if there's been significant churn in that department, one might ask why. One might ask. And again, I'm not adding anything to this conversation that's not in the public record, but on this floor, the mayor stood at that microphone in a recent meeting and stated some very serious allegations about a former department head. I'm not going to say anything more than that. You can go watch the tape. It's in the public. It was not an executive session. It was on the floor. We've had at least two department heads leave in the last two years under clouded circumstances. No information has ever formally been provided to the city council. So my point in bringing these up, as painful as they are, is we're supposed to make decisions on appointments. We're supposed to make decisions on appropriations. And every time we want to talk about personnel, which is, I think, a normal thing, the answer is it's personnel. Back off. That's the line. It's not acceptable to me. And unfortunately, in the context of this appointment, it's germane, and I have to bring it up, and I have to say it. I do think counselors have a right to information. We're all bound by the same privacy laws. You know, look up Mass. General Law. It doesn't say mayors are bound to this and counselors are bound to that. We all have the same standard. If you don't trust the city council, that's a problem, but that's not a reason enough to not to share with us. So what I was a little bit taken aback by in the conversation in committee was, you know, you need just enough information to perform your role. The problem is who decides how much information. If I ask for something, I'm deciding I need it to fulfill my role, and I should be able to get information. So while I admit mayors can do things, counselors can't, and vice versa, knowing things is not one of the things that I view as a line in the sand. So I was hoping you could address that.
So a lot of it comes down to is what the information you'll be looking for. If it comes down to personnel issues, and whether we're talking about termination disciplines, anything within that, that is strictly within HR, you know, as far as handling those things. When it comes with policies and those type things, then I would be coming with you folks and talking about that. But as far as specifics, you know, there's generalities I can talk about that I can give you an idea of, okay, in, you know, over the last six months, we've had seven investigations, or we've had eight terminations, or eight people leave due to A, B, C, D, and E. But as far as the specifics behind each person, I could not be able to give you that, just based on laws, and based on rules and regulations that I have to follow, where the Department of Labor, Mass. General Laws, and that type stuff goes. Within the limits that I'm allowed to, I can provide you that information. But when it comes to the others, I can't.
So it leads well to my third and final point, and I appreciate the patience. So my last one was my question about the parachutes, the severances, and so forth. So let me give you an example. If an employee leaves under suspicion of embezzlement, is the council entitled to know anything about that, that there was potential misuse, misappropriation, or outright theft of public funds, and to what extent, and when?
Partly yes, but as far as the specifics, the who, what, when, where, and why's, no. We can come back, and we can say, you know, we've had a case to where is yes. Some money was embezzled or taken or whatever, and that type stuff, but who it was, those type things, and in particulars on into that case, no, I can't. But I can give you some generalities having to do with that.
Okay. I've taken enough time. I yield now. Thank you.
Yeah, Counselor Lane, just a follow-up. Until there's charges pressed, right?
Correct. And in and along with that, I would be dealing with legal anyway. So there's certain things that I can and not. And part of that is to protect the city. You know what I mean? Not just the person, but to protect the city as far as liability goes. That's my job, is to protect the employees, but on the flip side of it, is to protect the city based on liabilities and those things. So that's why there's only so much that can be released on some of that, especially depending on where we are. What I have to look at is, every time I talk to somebody, have an investigation or anything else like that, I have to be able to, as if I was going to court. So everything that I do there, so that's sometimes why you may not get that stuff, and some of that information. And that's why it may be generalities, because if I get into specifics, now I have, I bring you into the case, and now you'll have to go to court and testify, depending on what the scenario is.
No, I very much appreciate that. It's also my job to protect the city, right? And so if you bring to me an appointment for the Director, and these are not, unfortunately, these are not hypotheticals that I'm actually stating. I'm stating things that I have witnessed or seen or heard about, and conjecture's tough, but, you know, when you're not able to access information, you cannot ascertain exactly what the reality is, is that, you know, we have had appointments before us when there have been allegations, frankly, around that, and we've been unable to get any information. How would you vote on that if you were a city councilor? How would you approach that? I mean, I just think it's, I guess what really I don't understand most is why you feel there's a difference between the mayor's access to information. He's an elected official. He's an employee of the city. He's bound by, you know, state, federal, and local and city law. I'm an elected official. I'm also bound to the same laws, and if you tell me something in executive session, for example, I must adhere to those things. And yes, I may become party to the case, but, like, I ran for office, so that's sort of a responsibility I unfortunately took on, and I'm trying my best. So I don't mean to sort of debate with you. I just want you to understand my perspective is, you know, I'm not going, I don't want to come into your office and say, open the file cabinet for me. I want to rifle through it. But if you give me an appointment, and when it comes to severances or settlements, there's money, and absolutely appropriations. So if you were to ask me as a resident, I know you don't live in Newburyport, let's say you came to me and said, how much has been spent on severances in the last year, three years? I'm the Chair of Budget. I have no idea. Couldn't tell you, don't know. Could be 10 million, could be 10 bucks. No one knows, and we've never been able to get that figure. That's a general number, not even who was it spent on, but how much? It's a very difficult situation.
That's something I can work towards, because that's a general type thing, and that's dollars, and it doesn't tell who it was and what it was for, you know, where those type things goes, you know, to be able to do that part of it. I understand that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Preston, and then Counselor Khan?
Yeah, really quickly, as a follow-on to that. So if the council were to ask for regular updates in executive session, do you feel that you could share with us? And if not, why can you share that with the mayor but not with the council?
So some of the differences is, as you look at it as a business, or whatever I'm dealing with that, the mayor's the CEO of the city, okay? So in some of the things that I bring forth to him, whether it's investigations, those type things, and even going with people and stuff like that, he's the ultimate final person to make that decision. You know what I mean? As far as if we're going to be terminating somebody or something like that goes. You know what I mean? So, and that's where that goes. Now, if we were to go into executive session, I would also have to be talking with legal to see what we have for, is it a case that's we're going to be litigating, or anything like that, then at that point, we can't. There's certain things we can do, and there's certain things we can't bring to there. But I will be honest with you, anything that I can bring to you, I will bring to you. And keep you guys, I'm a collaborative, I believe team. Together, everyone achieves more. I think if we all know as much as we can within our limits and what we can do, then we'll work together aggressively. You know what I mean? And do the right thing for the city and the employees to get the best service that we can within the city. That's my goal.
Counselor Khan?
Yeah, thank you. You know, something that came more later, and I know I didn't get to ask in General Government, but, you know, in looking at your resume, a lot of things that I noticed, you know, municipality is, while you're a city councilor, there's no, like, direct municipality HR experience. But being a city councilor, you probably know a little bit about how that works within the municipality versus the private sector, or being a consultant. What do you see as the main, maybe, differences in what you think an HR Director would be in the city versus in your other space or hat that you wore, or is there no difference?
There's really no difference. There's a lot of similarities. In the corporate world, and even, you know, in my recruiting world, and in the military side, I think part of the differences is what some of the laws, and just some of the different things that the city themselves have, as far as design phases go. But how we operate, a lot of it is all basically the same. There's just some different, whatever governmental things that you guys may set and establish.
And then kind of where I'm going with that is the, you know, the appointment. For example, that might be one big space difference, is that, you know, not only do you get hired by the administration, you have to be approved by this body as well. And I think that kind of goes a little bit with some of my colleagues' questions, is why are we part of the process, right? And again, you're a city councilor, so you know, like, you probably go through the same appointments. And the main thing that I think is really critical for me is that because we are kind of a partner in this relationship, that I do think that there are procedures that are maybe a little different than having one CEO to go to. So that's why I appreciate that we're having this conversation, and I appreciate the openness to maybe exploring ways that we could do that. And I do think that's a value from the hat that you are wearing as a counselor to understand that. So I just wanted to
And I believe in that. And I think a lot of it comes down to specifically where you asked, the same thing as far as the appointments go. It's what your bylaws say. That's what your bylaws, that's what some of your requirements are as far as in some of these positions. You know what I mean? It's not just a direct hire. We still have to go through this process as far as the appointment phase.
Other counselors? Okay. Hearing none. So the motion on the floor is for approval. Do a roll call.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zed?
Present.
Counselor Donahue? Counselor Granis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
And yes, one present, motion passes.
Congratulations. And thank you for this evening. We technically don't have a good of the order. I know Counselor Donahue dropped off, but I want to wish her a happy birthday on this weekend. I know we'll see each other on Monday night at our last regular meeting. We have, I believe, a 6:15 photo, 6:45 poll hearing, and, oh, I see him. And the clerk's also going to work with the Finance Director tomorrow just to get the paperwork processed, so we'll, I think, be coming back with a transfer.
6:30 budget in between.
Yeah, 6:30 budget, that's all I was going to say.
Okay. Well, I didn't want to cut you off, but I just wanted to say what I needed to say. So 6:30 budget is tomorrow.
Between the picture and the poll hearing.
Okay, gotcha, gotcha. All right, thank you for the clarification. Any other good of the order type stuff?
Motion to adjourn?
We can just do a voice vote. Again, Counselor Donahue has left the meeting, so all those in favor of adjourning, say aye. Aye, opposed. Thank you. Aye, opposed, thank you.